Okay, I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, December 19th, 7:00 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Rodriguez?
Present.
Commissioner Newton has recused herself because she can't vote on the first item. Green?
Present.
Fragoso?
Present.
Kirilline?
Here.
Gonzalez Parber?
Here.
Chair Swift?
Here.
Now, do I have approval of the agenda or any changes?
I would move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. We now have public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission may do so now. Please state the matter on which you wish to speak. Matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. Persons are not required to give their name or address, but it is helpful for speakers to state their name for the record and whether or not they're a Fairfax resident in order that the secretary may identify them. Do we have anyone wishing to speak during open time? All right, seeing none. Consent calendar, there are no items for the consent calendar, so we're going to go to item one. Six, eight, 10, and 12, School Street Plaza, application 1915, continued consideration of a request for a conditional use permit and design review permit for minor expansion to Building Eight and other changes to other buildings at School Street Plaza. Can we have the staff report?
Yes, so as the chair indicated, this was continued from the October 17th meeting, and at that meeting, the commission gave direction to staff and to the applicant of additional information they would like to have. The applicant was asked to provide the rent range that will be charged for each live-work space and the approximate number of people potentially occupying the space. They were asked for more detailed floor plans that showed door, window locations, sizes, whether a window will be used for egress, the dimensions of each unit, and the areas dedicated to be used for commercial and residential uses, with the bedroom and sleeping areas called out. Several commissioners stated that they would be supportive of the project if it would result in provision of affordable housing, so they asked the applicant to address that. One commissioner was concerned about the low percentage of working space relative to living space, so they revised the plan so they now have ratios closer to 60/40 or 50/50. They asked staff to provide them with other live-work ordinances, which we did, and to review the proposed live-work spaces for compliance with the California Building Code and the California Residential Code requirements. So, everything the commission asked for has been provided, except that you asked the applicant to locate the garbage area on the plans, and I think it was just an oversight on their part. The garbage is in the northeast corner of the property, that's where it's been for years, and they can address whether they're going to change it, but I don't know why they would because it's really the only location for it. So after the October meeting, the applicants did make some changes to the plans. They relocated two of the live-work spaces that had been located on the second floor of Building Six. Those units were going to share a bathroom, and they relocated them to Building Eight and added a little bit more square footage there. Building Eight is the building that they're trying to bump out to capture a shaded area that really, it's dark, it lends itself to people hanging out there, and it's really underutilized space. They've also proposed a change to convert Suite 12B2. It was going to strictly be a commercial unit, and they're proposing that as a live-work unit with a kitchenette and a bathroom. So they've increased the number of proposed live-work spaces from 14 to 15. That change does not increase the parking requirement for the property. It already has a lot more parking than is required by the code, so there's no issue there, and we do not believe that change is going to elevate the number of traffic trips. Changing the uses from commercial to live-work, the town traffic engineer said that's going to decrease the traffic coming to the site, and so this would not increase it either, he indicated. So when we were reviewing the building code with the building official, we reviewed other agencies' ordinances, and we discovered that none of them involved sharing bathrooms between units, and so when we re-reviewed the ordinances, we determined that the section that we were using that we originally believed would allow four dwelling units, up to four dwelling units, to share a bathroom, was really not intended for that. It was intended for boarding houses. And so, we spoke with the applicant and indicated that if he wants a live-work space, it really has to have a bathroom. So they revised the plans to show that all the units are going to have their own bathrooms. So the owner has repeatedly indicated that he has difficulty monitoring changes the tenants make to the interior of the building once they've moved in, so we have added some conditions to the resolution that you saw in October. One, we'd like to add the condition, conversion of additional suites to live-work or residential units without the approval of a modification of this conditional use permit shall be grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit. Two, all tenants and the owner shall obtain building permits for any work requiring a permit per the California Building Code. Work requiring a permit but completed without permits shall be grounds for revocation or modification of the conditional use permit. And three, work without a required building permit will result in issuance of an immediate red tag of the project and issuance of a citation to both the property owner and any tenant allowing or having the work done within their unit. So the planning director is going to address affordability, because that was one of the concerns the Planning Commission had. They were hoping that some of the units could be affordable.
Yes, your commission is in receipt of a letter from the applicant wherein he raises objections to two items. One is the lighting levels, and the other are the affordability restrictions that are contained in conditions 33, 34, and 35. And the applicant has voluntarily agreed to limit two of the units as affordable to very low-income people, and staff would recommend that the town limit its affordability requirement at this time to the two units being requested by the applicant. It is noted that in order to qualify as affordable, you have to have the legal agreements with, for example, the term limits, et cetera. So assuming we are proceeding with that affordable housing, staff would recommend that, with the exception of removing, and I would simply recommend that the applicant be allowed to select which units would be the two very low, and that we would eliminate the additional two units from the condition requiring that, which would be condition 33. In terms of lighting levels, the applicant is referencing a manual which costs about $600, and staff does not have access to it. However, we have looked at other documents, for example, the Federal Energy Commission, and we believe that a one-to-two lumen foot candle light intensity at ground level, not at the source, but at ground level, is reasonable. However, we are interested in seeing what the applicant recommends in terms of lighting levels. It may be that he thinks that a lower level is appropriate. Fortunately, here in Central Marin, we don't have primary security concerns as other places do, but we believe that with having people present on the site 24 hours a day, it would be appropriate to have exterior lighting screened, as noted in the condition, but exterior lighting to assist people in safely walking throughout the property and especially near the buildings. So if you have any questions about that.
Oh, but let me ask.
So we're kind of in mid-
That's not the end, is that the end of the staff report?
Yeah, we're kind of in mid-staff report. No, that's not the end.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so we had previously reviewed the addition to Building Eight, and the newly proposed addition to create the two units that have moved from Building Six is just going to match what he had proposed for the rest of the addition area, and that it's typical California public school building design. There's not a lot you can do with it, but the new building is going to mask the architecture of the other old buildings on the site. The facade that faces the parking lot has been softened through the erection of a vine-covered trellis structures, and the addition to Building Eight has been designed to match the existing exterior of the building, both with minor changes in the numbers and size of windows and relocation of the doors accessing the space. The area of the addition is not adjacent to any residential structures. It faces the ball field and the pavilion, so it's not really going to have a significant visual impact on any residences. So based on our ability to make the required findings, we're recommending that you approve application 1914 by adopting Resolution 201917 with the change that the planning director recommended to condition 33, which is to... should read as follows. "The applicant shall record a deed restriction restricting the two very low-income rental units," and we're going to let the applicant choose which those are, "to being very low-income," and then eliminate the rest of the sentence, "and two of the five low-income rental units to being low-income, but keep the four 55 years." So we want the applicant shall record a deed restriction restricting the two very low-income rental units to being very low-income for 55 years. And that would conclude our report.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part?
You want me to read the condition the way we want it? Okay. So, "Condition 33 shall read, 'The applicant shall record a deed restriction restricting the two very low-income rental units to being very low-income for 55 years.'" And that's a requirement in order for us to get credit for them being low-income with our RENA numbers. They have to be restricted for at least 55 years.
So, questions for staff?
I have a clarification question on that condition 33, Linda. how will those be monitored?
So if you read the condition right below it, there's a requirement that the tenants of those two units have to complete and file with Marin Housing Authority annual income certification forms, and the county has agreed that for a fee, they will perform those reviews to make sure that the people living in the units are low-income and qualify to be in those low-income units.
And the housing authority would also confirm that the rents are affordable at that appropriate level.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question on that condition, too. So, I wanted to go back to our housing element and our general plan policy that had a program that said that we should amend the general plan and the zoning for this site. What does the housing element identify for the number of units on the site?
In researching the housing element, I believe it's, what it mentioned was the applicant was interested in providing low-income housing. It didn't, it talked about nine total units, but it did not list a specific number, and as your commission is aware, at this time, the town does not have an inclusionary housing requirement, i.e. low-income percentage for housing.
So the housing element's silent?
Excuse me?
The housing element is silent?
In terms of the number of units.
Thank you.
It lists overall RENA numbers, and I would point out that we're going to be doing quite well once Victory Village is completed in terms of our current RENA housing cycle numbers for both very low-income and low-income. So, that's one blessing we've achieved.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, was the lighting requirement that was originally, that is in the proposed conditions, too low or too high, or what was the issue?
Well, that was the condition, that we were fine with it the way it is, but I know that one of the commissioners expressed some concern about what the level we had chosen, and the applicant has also expressed some concern. So we don't have a problem with changing it, as long as it complies with the building code, right?
Just, I mean, just overall, what if those lights were like motion-sensitive and they weren't on all the time, or something like that? Or some of them, or some others perhaps, motion-sensitive security lights at certain locations?
Yeah, we could certainly look at what the building code requires. In fact, typically, that's what we defer to, and it may be that that range of lumen level that we say it's between 1 and 2, that may be a little bit difficult to achieve because, of course, when you have lights, it's going to be a higher intensity near the light and then as you get further away. But frankly, I'd be interested in seeing what the applicant has to say to get to the bottom of what their concerns about that condition are. I think staff's position is simply that lighting is appropriate at that site to make sure that people have safe egress and access.
I mean, there's that one rear stairway that goes down to the park that's, at night, is, I would say, treacherous.
The gated one?
No, the one that goes between Building Eight and 12, down to the bridge that crosses over to this building, right back here? Yeah.
Yeah.
And it doesn't go to any paved path, it just goes to a dirt path. I mean, that's going to be, I don't know what you're going to do about that, but...
Any other questions for staff? I've got some. So the applicant submitted materials yesterday, or a letter, which you responded to some of those items. Has staff had time to review all of the comments the applicant made on that? Because it didn't only refer to lighting and some deed restrictions, but it had, they had other concerns. So I want to know, since it was submitted yesterday, and we just got it yesterday, if staff has had adequate time to review all of that?
No, staff has not had a chance to review it.
Okay. Is there any construction going on now?
There is construction that the building department has issued a building permit for, things that are required for safety, things that we agreed with the applicant that he could do, so there is some construction occurring that the building inspector is monitoring.
And garbage, the staff report talks about one receptacle. Should I assume that since this would propose living units, that there would be green waste and all the appropriate requirements for living units to have?
I believe there's adequate room to do that, but you might ask that question of the applicant, because I believe there's adequate room there to do all that, where the existing garbage is located.
Okay. Staff report, and I'm not doing these in any order, so I apologize, but the staff report states that while some towns have separate live-work ordinances, some process them as Fairfax does by a conditional use permit. So when was the last time Fairfax had a live-work project, and how did we define live-work? Because as I read through this with some of the other aspects of the staff report, you know, in my mind, I see we've got mixed use, we've got work-live, and we've got live-work, and I don't know that we've defined any of those anywhere.
Yeah, so our code is written so that it has these kind of catch-all under conditional uses. It includes, it lists things, and then it says, "or any other use that the Planning Commission determines is appropriate," right? The only space that I know of, since I've been here, that I call live-work, when it went through the process, live-work was not a popular catchphrase, was for the manager of this property. There's one unit there that was approved years ago. I don't believe she, I think that's her job, she manages the property. I could be wrong, but so that's the one live-work unit that we've processed, that I know of. And our code does not define live-work. The code was written at a time when that was not, it wasn't an accepted term, right? But we wouldn't normally define that unit as a live-work unit. That's more of a site maintenance living unit, right? Because there's not a commercial aspect of that unit. That's right, but I mean, that's where she works, you know? Yeah.
Okay. The staff report also discusses building code requirements of live-work as workspace where the work aspect of it is not more than 50% of the area, and it references the building code on that. But there are, but then we follow that with saying that the work, the commercial aspect, is the primary use, and residential is secondary. Those two things seem to conflict in my mind, and we have other towns that look at work-live, where, again, they talk about primary use being the commercial, the artistic, and the residential is the secondary. So by referencing the building code and the live-work and the 50%, my question would be, does the building code, because other towns have been able to do this, look at work-live, where, again, the primary usage is the commercial?
I gave you the only building section that refers to, and it's live-work.
Any of that.
It's live-work, yeah, there's no other section.
Okay, so there's no, since other towns can do this, I mean, to me, it goes back to, again, our definitions of live-work, work-live, and mixed use.
Yeah, other towns determined that, other towns, when you read their ordinances and you go back and read the staff reports, it was very important to them that because these things were occurring in their commercial zones, they wanted the commercial to be a greater square footage, right? So they designated like 750 square feet and things like that. We don't have a live-work ordinance, this is being processed as a use permit, so...
Yeah, another aspect of that is typically other jurisdictions where you see that the ordinances pertaining to live-work or work-live are larger jurisdictions with more staff able to more closely monitor the situation. As we know from the situation in School Street, it's a kind of a fluid determination between the living space and the workspace. So I think the question is, is one going to be predominant and the other is just incidental? And staff's position was, no. If you're going to have a place that's suitable for work, it has to be something that's identified as primarily for work. How you do the definition of square footage, et cetera, could be more subject to discussion.
Looking at the plans, the staff report mentions Building Eight, 8B is one of the units involved, but the plans didn't have an 8B. There's like an 8B1, 8B... I guess my question is, are the plans that we have accurate as to referencing the units?
So, I'm not sure if I can explain this, but, you know, so the applicant had submitted a set of plans that showed two small, two additional small units that were going to share bathrooms, that were going to use bathrooms that were shared, right? And so since they were going to be separate units, they issued them a different number, okay? So, I mean, to me, it doesn't really make, so they had like 8D1 and 8D2, right? But now it's, 8D is all one unit, they put it back to being one unit. And 8B2 is the one that was split into two different units, which they've put back into one unit. I think it's really just 8B, but I mean, to me, that's kind of a minor issue that we just, if we are concerned, it's the concern that they might take that space and make it into two units because of the numbering? Because the numbering can be cleared up at the building permit stage, to just make sure that it reflects what's actually out there and doesn't reference this kind of leftover numbering that was just an oversight when they put it back to the way it was originally. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, and that goes to trying to track from the October staff report to this staff report and the table for the IP... let me find it. The table which defined how many people per size of bedroom?
Oh, so are you wondering, did they up, are you wondering, did they update that table?
Well, I was trying to track those out, and I guess a question overall in the staff report...
I thought he, I thought they attached an updated one.
I guess one of the questions I had is, because I know that was a concern from last time, is that chart showed for some of these five individuals.
Right.
And that's still in, I believe, the current staff report, and I'm confused as to...
I can explain that. It's in the staff report because staff was going off of the International Property Management Code, which is all we're concerned with, so the applicant is actually proposing fewer tenants than would be allowed by code. His table consistently has fewer tenants for most of the spaces than would be allowed. So, the staff report addresses the maximum that would be allowed under the code, and his table addresses the number that they're proposing to have in those units.
So we don't know then what staff's recommendation would be, and part of those, what the applicant is requesting was updated just yesterday in what was submitted as part of their letter? Or was that part of... I guess I'm concerned on what's current with this, so, but I'll go back and ask that later on in the discussion piece.
Well, are you looking at, so, I understand the old table, right? Which I don't think is very different from the new table. And what I'm saying is the code allows more tenants than he would, than they're proposing. So, if it's allowed by code, I'm not sure what the concern is.
Okay. In the staff report, on page eight at the bottom, it talks about, "Live-work quarters shall be occupied and used only by the business operator or a family of, at least, of which at least one member shall be the business operator." Do we have a definition of what family is within this?
No, and I think the state doesn't allow us to define a family.
I believe it's strictly household.
Anyone living together that's sharing a kitchen can be a family.
I know, and some of the other codes, some of the other towns have different nomenclature for that, so that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, I don't think any, so, we acknowledge that we don't have a live-work ordinance, so some of this terminology is not going to be in our definition section, because the only way to change the definition section is to actually do a zoning code change.
Okay.
Through the chair. Typically jurisdictions will use the term household instead of trying to define who and what a family is. It would be a household of two, a household of three, a household of four.
And some of the other town ordinances that we've looked at have defined them slightly different from that, so that's why I was asking the question. Hazardous materials, so the staff report talks about hazardous materials. How do we monitor for those? Because we look at some of the current usage, uses are artist studios, which may or may not have hazardous materials in there. So how do we monitor for that? Either from a fire stamp, fire inspection standpoint, or...
So the building official felt that the fire department would look for that when they're doing their, they do it at least every two to three years, they inspect all the... They inspect all the commercial properties. But I think we could include a question, you know, if this is approved, we could include an attachment to their business license, asking them, you know, what type of materials they use, and each year they would have to recertify whether they're using something hazardous. And of course, they might not tell the truth, but then it would be backed up with the fire department inspections, which the building official says are not, they're not notified, you know, they don't, the fire department just shows up and inspects, so.
So the staff report talks about prohibited uses and mentions off-site catering, and I wasn't clear as to whether that was accepted or not accepted, or?
It was meant to be prohibited, and I think, I think what they're saying is you can't cook, you know, you can't have, cook restaurant food in your live-work space and cater it off-site.
Okay, because it doesn't really, it doesn't, it isn't clear on cooking within the commercial, so that's why I was trying to figure that out.
So if you can think of a way to make that clearer, that's fine, but also the health department, you know, the health department, the new state laws allow you to do certain things in your own home kitchen, but they're not very, they're not very elaborate, and they're not cooking things where you can poison people accidentally. So I'm pretty sure the health department wouldn't allow restaurants in conjunction with live-work anyway.
Okay, do all of our businesses that would be located there require business licenses?
Yes.
Okay. Because that wasn't, that wasn't something I found in the reso itself, but just to clarify. Okay. And in reading, and thank staff for giving us all those other towns, look at how they address this. Some of them do as part of their application, an environmental assessment as part of the process, looking for things, asbestos, lead. Since we have a situation where we have commercial space that has become live-work that didn't come through us initially, have we done any kind of assessment? How do we know from an environmental standpoint? I mean, this is an old facility that there aren't those types of hazards in them.
I'm just going to check with the, with the planning director, but I'm pretty sure if you're concerned about that, you could make that a condition, that they do testing for lead paint and things like that before anyone inhabits. I mean, they're already there, but they'd have to.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to check, but my understanding is that you're not allowed to have such materials present in a leased space anyway. So in terms of freeable asbestos or lead paint, that there are requirements that you're, you as a landlord are required to certify at some point, that you don't have lead-based paint or asbestos. But we could, we could confirm that. Whatever the current regulatory practice is, the applicant would be required to follow that.
But we don't know now, as of now, we don't know the current environmental standards of the units that are inhabited, correct?
If you're asking whether we know of a difference between commercial space and residential space, no, we do not.
If there's any problems there, we don't know the answer to that. We don't. Right. I mean, you think it's certified and it's probably okay, but we haven't gone out and seen, I haven't seen the results of any tests for lead paint or anything on that property.
Okay. And this might be a question probably for the applicant, but in moving some of these units from the October, do we know why they were changed from one to the other, and if there were residents in them that have now been moved out, such as the items in, the ones in Building 6, or?
Yeah, you'll have to ask the applicant that.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I had several questions, but you actually asked most of them. I guess this could wait for applicant, but the thing I'm most concerned about, what the applicant wrote for tonight, this letter dated December 18th, is his concern about Condition 31 and 32. Was there any discussion about people not having to apply, or an onerous aspect of people having to apply for permits if they made changes to their properties?
Well, it's the law. I mean, we didn't discuss it with him. He's supposed, he and his tenants are supposed to be complying with the law right now. We're just pointing it out because in the past, that has not been the case.
And we would also point out that there.
That was my concern.
There has been work that's occurred in several of the units already. For example, provision of egress windows, and that has all been done through building permits, the appropriate permits. So they're on track in terms of their requirements.
And do you guys know when the building, when the school was built?
I don't have these memories, these dates committed, but I thought I, did I not? Yes, it burned at one point and they rebuilt it, right? The original school.
Right, got it, okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, if there's no questions from the Commission for Staff, I'll ask if the applicant has, is here and wants to provide any comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred Asazi. I own this property for over 30 years. And the only thing I got to tell you, every one of my tenants, when they move in, and I constantly tell them, they're extended of my family and my friends. I came to this country in 1963 with $1,000. I educated myself and worked day and night in order not to be burdened on the society. I'm not. And because several times I had to sleep in my car, I made a point, I will do anything I can to do this society. And I have fulfilled it. And I don't think anywhere in this town, you guys can find a places a lower price than mine. I do consider low income, high income, all of it, what the people can afford. And that's very important for me, because my life without those tenants means nothing. And I'd like them, some of them are over here, to extend their opinion, what kind of landlord I am, or, I'm not a landlord really. I am managing this property for them and the bank and the insurance and the city of Fairfax. Because overall, anything they pay me is anywhere between 75 to 90 cents of that every square foot of it goes to those expenses. This is, this is commercial. This is not the residential. And usually, commercial places are rented triple-net. That means the tenants, they pay the expenses except the bank, you know, expense. So based on that one, I, because I'm a little hard on hearing, I'd like one of my tenants to discuss the matter why we did put that letter of yesterday into the file, because I don't think my property can stay another 50, 60 years when this, people are putting some restriction on it. These properties are 70 years old or longer, and I hope I have a good plan for that property, except one unit, I will dedicate it for low income or anything else. But the other couple of units of that one, I hope one day will be good center for elderly people. I don't know, I will be able to see it or not, because I'm over 80 years old. So based on that one, I can talk Mr. Madam to express why my concern is for the purpose of that letter. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner Kammer. Going to work a little bit backwards here about questions. The buildings, like Fred, the applicant said, the newest building, which is Building 6, was built approximately 1978. I think it was fully commissioned and approved in 1982. So it's the newest building. And Building 12, I believe, is the next oldest building, which is 1956, and the other buildings are about the same age. So the buildings, like the applicant, Mr. Asazi, said, they are typically 70 years old. And they were all built as classrooms, except for Building 6, which was built as a commercial building, a medical building, right from the get-go. It's two stories tall, and it's a basic wooden frame beam construction. The Building 6 probably does not have issues regarding the lead paint because of its age. There has been mold testing done in that building on various occasions, but I don't think any of the environmental assessments would apply to that. The rest of the buildings are school buildings, but they are old. And, and we really don't know what the lead asbestos is, but based on their era, there is probably asbestos floor tile and other things like that, which have been encapsulated and would not be out above the floor. Most of the floors there have been replaced with engineered floors. So the, any asbestos would probably be, already be encapsulated in place. However, we would be willing to comply with whatever environmental testing would be necessary in order to move the status of the building from being occupied commercially to being occupied for whatever other use might be the case. There's been a little bit of a curveball here. I'm going to jump to it right away, and then I'll go on. And it has to do with the, with the covenant, the 55-year deed restriction. Paragraph 17 dot 092050G1, which is the CL zoning for Fairfax, limits the conditional use permit to six months. In other words, what you're approving today is a six-month use permit. You're not approving a permanent use permit. This use permit, if you approve it tonight, has to be reviewed in not more than six months. And at that time, if there is anything like a deed restriction or other covenants which need to be placed on the two units that we're proposing, or any other units for that matter, that's the time to do your restrictions in order to bring this into compliance with RHNA. And that's only for the RHNA moderate or low income, because RHNA also defines above moderate, which my presumption is, and I would check with staff here, is that above moderate numbers, which in Fairfax's case, there's, on its housing element, there are 188 units in order to comply with RHNA. 54 of them are above moderate. And I would like to inquire with staff if those 54, that count on that table requires any type of deed restriction. My guess would be only the low-income ones would, as defined by the housing authority. The housing authority table is Attachment E of your, it looks like this. And when reviewing the video from the last meeting, Fairfax here has a, a annual income for household size of $1 of $95,750 per year in 2019. So our rents are based on a percentage of that. So when we, we analyze those rates, we are basing it using the county Marin numbers, based on that figure for a single household and a 109,450 for a two-person household. Numbers are large, but that's what they publish at the county. So I would like the staff to confirm what I'm saying about the paragraph G1. That would be basically that this is a six-month approval. And for that reason, and that reason only, I don't think we should subject a permanent covenant or 55-year covenant at this time. This live-work for School Street Plaza is presented as an equal or better development of the premises and makes a substantial contribution to the workforce, housing crisis in Fairfax. We emphasize that disapproval of this project would worsen the housing crisis in Fairfax as the premises has already been called home by a significant number of Fairfax residents. The housing element classifies workforce housing as special needs housing. In practice, School Street has also contributed towards another special need, female-headed households. This is on housing element, is actually general plan, page H8. At the time of the application, which now the application's been filed for some time, 12 of the 14 live-in units were female-headed households, including those caring for children. At the moment, we have seven female-headed households of, and 11 live-in units. This is the applicant's practice, and no agency has imposed this on the applicant. While not presented to the Commission as affordable housing project, I do wish that the Commission refer to the staff report, Attachment D and Attachment E. And Attachment D, which is, looks like this. Attachment E I showed you before, looks like this. Those have been modified once the staff report came out with the letter that was dated on Wednesday. Basically, what that letter does is it has a table which reconciles according to the findings by the staff by using the IPMC and applying those numbers to the square footages that they measured in the bedrooms. And what we did, we scaled those same measurements and came up with this table. And this is the table that the leasing would be limited at, which in no case exceeds the number on the IPMC, and is also the basis to ensure compliance or voluntary compliance with the affordability. So essentially, what we're saying is, since the state and the county numbers refer to household size, one, two, and those other rental levels, we reconcile that in the last several here, and we make the corrections. In fact, it says on the second-to-last column that we are keeping it at two according to the original column, or we're correcting it to one, so we don't try to collect too much rent from a household of one. By using the IPMC rate data and recounting, 13 of the 15 units of this application would be considered affordable as a moderate income based on that same IPMC occupancy. That's 80% of all the live-work units. The two that do not have large commercial features that are unlikely to be part of a home. One has a full recording studio with a control room, and the other has a large open studio space, which is typically used for meetings and other sessions by that tenant. Another thing I want to point out is that the definition of median, just to review, means an equal distribution of both and below the number of median. means an equal distribution above and below the number of median. The rents presented in Attachment D and the supplement that was forwarded to the staff show 60% of a level below affordable for one person and 50% below affordable for two persons. So in Fairfax, School Street rents lean on the affordable end of our community's, our own community's, income distribution. Of the community, we need to house. Of the workforce, we need to house. I'll just repeat the letter about what the Planning Director had spoken, that we do request that Conditions 33, 34, and 35, which are the conditions that have to do with monitoring and the deed restrictions, be struck from this resolution. And if they are to be considered, they can be considered upon the review, the six-month We've also prepared a draft lease addendum, Attachment G, as part of the applicant's part in an effort to contractually keep the use commercial first with residential as a secondary and incidental use, as we were told and also guided by the previous October meeting and the staff reports. This concept came from searching for other live-work supplemental lease addendums. We realized that when we use a commercial lease for a property that's now under the control of residential rental and just cause ordinances, that we need to make, we need to adapt in order to address that lawfully. We took a template from another much larger project, and we edited it and we added the elements which we saw that were part of the resolution conditions in order to have a signed document by each tenant so that it is notice, real, not constructive notice, but actual notice has been made to the tenants about how they can use the spaces, what is considered hazardous, what is considered proper use, and most importantly, from the town, that we, tenants in the School Street, understand that they're renting in a commercial, limited zone, that they're not renting in a residential zone, and that they recognize that there may be noises, flares, odors, and what have you, that exist because of the commercial nature of the existing tenants. We also asked that Conditions 31 and 32, which are the building permit pieces, they were not brought up at the first hearing, or they did not occur in the notice of action. What these essentially do is they expose us 15 households to pay the price, and they could be displaced from their homes or have their businesses shut down by the action of a single rogue tenant or an outsider. If someone does some work without a permit, and then they are cited by the building official in code enforcement, we feel that shutting down 15 innocent households and another 21 commercial businesses is over the top. "There are still 21 commercial units on the property. This project preserves the ability of those businesses to operate. The anchor businesses of Soul in Building 12, Frog's in Building 10, Sound Wire in Building 8, which is included on our proposal as the Unit 8D with a living space since musicians are known to need rest after marathon sessions, and the Marin Alliance in Building 6 are to remain, and the project will work in concert with these longtime businesses. In fact, a music theme live-work is being proposed as Unit 8B because there's a recording studio in the same property and other longtime tenants who are musicians. Therapeutic live-work spaces in Building 10 and 12 are to complement spa and the yoga studios. And the proposal encourages commercial opportunity in Building 6. Only one live-work in Building 6 is still on the application, and that was because it was called the nicest unit on the property after the town walked through it. That's Unit 110, and we are keeping that unit as part of the proposal. The proposal has been designed with enough headroom to move tenants around during the remodeling. This question came up among the Commissions about why are we moving people from Building 6? Well, that was determined because the second floor of Building 6 is a mixed-juice building, and because of that requires more fire separation than we were prepared to do. The first-floor space, the fire separation, is easy to achieve without disrupting other spaces which are occupied. Whereas with building a one-hour firewall, according to the Fire Inspector's Report on Spaces 270 and 280, would have been extremely disruptive to other tenants. Some of them have been there 15 years. So we did not want to have a commercial, disrupt a commercial business's operation over fireproofing, and we felt it was simpler to simply build Units 8A3 and 8A4, which are the ones that are replacing the maintenance and bathrooms areas on the edge of Building 8. We decided to do those instead. "All the existing residents will be accommodated with similar spaces to what they occupied before the project. No one is being displaced. What's happening is the fire separation and all the buildings and all the spaces will be reviewed, egress added, electrical and life safety modernized, so everyone will be safer." We asked that the lighting condition, number three, would be modified, at least back to how it read for the October hearing. In the October hearing, there was a minimum value, but no maximum value. We took that, and we evaluated what type of lighting we will need. Of course, we're all going to use modern dark-skY lighting compliant features, and the reference that I had submitted to the town is what the Dark Sky Society had suggested to use as the reference. And the one-foot candle level for walkways and entryways is fine. The problem is, is that in order to achieve that lighting in the parking lot, there will be hot spots, what that's called in lighting, hot spots, that will be over 30 times brighter. So it's difficult to achieve consistent one-to-two foot candle lighting on areas the size of a parking lot, because as you get further from the light, the light gets much dimmer. In our case, it's 30-foot candles directly below the light in order to get one foot candle on the other side of the aisle of the parking lot. And that's why we want it changed. But in addition to that, we're proposing 3,000... I'll use some, you can ask me if you want. We're preferring to use much lower Kelvin temperatures and lighting because it's less disruptive to the cycles of animals, sleep, and others. In other words, a warm reddish color light rather than blue lights, and those would appear around the perimeter of Building 8, for example. And that would also illuminate the through-onobstructed public pathway access which goes between the Little League Field and the bridge. We have not addressed in our tentative lighting plan the dirt path between the bridge, but that dirt path is on the property. And if anybody should be responsible for that, it would be the applicant. So there may have to be an additional post there, but the way we're laying out the lighting is to use the pergolas that exist and the building lines that exist, and using shoebox style light fixtures, which are rated at only 3,000 degrees Kelvin. "The fence is withdrawn, Alan. The landscaping bond associated with the fence is no longer applicable. We prefer that Condition 8B modified, so it's about..." So we talk about removing the partially-installed fence posts, which may be done simply because the building official is going to require it. But we suggest bookmarking the fence removal and the landscaping piece, or suggest it be incorporated as a finding when we apply for an extension of our cup and use permit in six months. Lastly, I want to say that if you hear from our community during public comment, please lend an ear to anyone who expresses a desire to allow creativity to flow into the common areas such as walkways. Many folks wander into School Street and have positive responses after seeing a sculpted bonsai, an artist, or new-age creative at work outdoors on campus. We realize that the applicant is not asking for an exception to the no-business-outside clause, but if there's one touch, a Fairfax touch, that the Commission could add on their own initiative for the sake of the denizens of Fairfax, please listen and do what you say. What that would mean is approving Section 17 dot 090 dot 050, Paragraph D, for uses defined in Section 17 dot 092 dot 040A5 only. That would be a baseline of how you would define that if you so choose. "School Street conjures up thoughts of what the McMiniman Brothers did in Oregon. They took an abandoned poor farm..."
Rick, just for time's sake, are you almost done?
I am almost done.
Because I know Commission might have questions for you, so I'd like to move this on. Thank you.
I always appreciate it when you keep an eye on me there, Cindy.
Oh, I should have talked earlier then.
You warned me. "School Street conjures up thoughts about what the McMiniman Brothers did in Oregon. They took an abandoned poor farm called Edgefield Manor, a former public school called Kennedy School, a former private school called St. Francis School, and over a dozen other orphaned properties, and turned them into destinations teeming with art and rejuvenation. School Street is the Fairfax version, right here. Let it happen."
Any questions for, from the Commission?
Yes, I had, can you please clarify exactly how many total units? I think you were saying 21 and 15. Is that, you add those together? How many total units? What spaces are there on the property?
There are 36 total spaces, but there are some multiple-space tenants. For example, Marin Alliance has three spaces, Frog's has two, but there's a total of 36 spaces, and that's where the number 21 plus 15, the 15 in the application and 21 strictly commercial spaces.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Esther?
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure I understood your reason for the, I guess, the lighting in the parking. I'm not sure I understand your challenge. So are you saying that the dark skies light is not bright enough, or is too bright to reach the end of the parking, or the edge of the parking area?
I think what my point there is, is that when you're using a downward-aimed shoebox style light, and there is a hotspot pointing downwards, it is not going to affect the spillage into the sky or adjoining properties. So limiting, putting an upper limit of the two-foot candles there, we believe is overly restrictive on the lighting.
So too low? You're afraid that it's too low for the parking?
Correct. I believe that one foot, in fact, the manual that, when we take the appropriate zone, lighting zone, which would be Lighting Zone 2, the recommendation is 1.25-foot candles as the value for walkways and hardscape.
Okay. Can I have a question about parking lots? Don't they have different standards? I mean, I understand walkways, but parking lots, especially commercial parking lots, might have different standards? So I'm just wondering if that's maybe where you reconcile that?
Yes, I think we are talking about two lighting levels. And as to the hot spots, obviously, if you have a light standard with fixtures, the area immediately underneath is going to be a higher output. So if there's a concern about that, I think we could work with the applicant. I'm not concerned about saying, look, nothing can be over two, because obviously, you're going to have spacing between light fixtures. And if you're maintaining a minimum at the furthest extent of where the light is cast, it's going to be brighter closer to it. So it was mainly to make sure that we didn't end up with too much lighting near, in the pedestrian-accessible areas. And I think, Lynda, you had recommended modification to the condition if your Commission wants to consider it.
So the building official suggested that that condition could be modified, that the lighting plan and the illumination be reviewed by our Plan Checkers, Coaslin, to make sure that it's the minimum necessary to make the pathways safe, right?
Okay, so I think that's negotiable. So I think you're okay on that. Same thing with the low-income definition. I'm a little bit confused. Are you saying that because the average household income in Fairfax is high compared to what defines, or what would be defined as low income, would that be too high for affordability? Is that what you're saying, that basically it would be enforced at a higher rate that was unaffordable? Is that your concern?
The formula is essentially, they take the median income for a community, and they define affordable as being 30% of that value. Sometimes they buffer it with 110% of the values. They give it a little bit of extra space. But typically, when we go into the moderate affordable, it's at 30% of the full median. And then there's levels which are in that Attachment E, which drop down to 70%, 60%, 65, and the resources, and very low. Very low being 50% of median and 30% of that. So essentially, you take the median income, take 50% of that, and the rent is 30% of that. And that number results, the number results in being $1,318, I believe, is a one-person studio affordable for very low in this town.
Okay, but so is your objection or your exception to the condition that it be, I guess, monitored or applied for through the Housing Authority? I guess I don't understand what you're taking exception to.
The exception there is because if the deed restriction is placed immediately as the result of this meeting, the property is going to be burdened with a 55-year deed restriction, but yet the use permit may not be approved. It could possibly be disapproved in only six months. So I believe that the time to place any deed restrictions or alternative to the deed restriction is not at this meeting, but it would be in the meeting six months from now.
One more question. I guess Condition 31 about work without permits revoking the conditional use permit. I understand what you're saying, and, you know, I'll clarify. I think it sounds like anytime you violate one of the building codes, you automatically revoke the conditional use permit, or not necessarily?
No, we were just talking about the unit where the work is occurring would be stopped. We wouldn't evict everyone from all the other units where no work is occurring. Yeah, that wasn't our intention.
So, but it does say that it would revoke the conditional use permit for that unit?
No, what we meant is it may result in the Commission revisiting and reviewing and modifying or revoking the use permit, but there would be a public hearing.
Okay.
So if there's enough red tagging going on, you know, the staff may say, hey, this isn't working. We were going to schedule this so the Commission can talk about it, see if there's a way to modify the condition so that this works better for the town and for the applicant, if there's problems, right?
So does that make you feel a little better?
If the language reflects... If the language reflected precisely that, and it wasn't, didn't appear to be discretionary, because my read of that particular condition was, it sounded like one person's action somewhere on campus would result in everyone being punished, and that, I felt, was extreme.
Yeah, I would also say that part of what we're doing with this process is kind of daylighting the residential component of this property, which has been going on for some time, and the idea is to say that by going through this process and getting approval, if that's what ends up occurring, that the intention or the expectation is that we wouldn't be continuing to deal with ongoing conversions that occur without permits. So if we continue to see that widespread practice, then potentially, we could take this to the commission and say, look, we're, you know, we got approval, it's for these number of units, and then we're continuing to see this pattern of illegal work or occupancy, et cetera. So we don't anticipate that's the problem. I think part of what we're doing is saying, what's, what's occurring out here right now, and going through that process for it, and I think we've tried to sync what our review is and our recommendations are pretty closely with what the applicant's proposing. For example, the latest request on the number of units. And as Lynda alluded, if there's an individual bad actor out there, this condition would just give us the ability to go to that person and say, you're violating that and you're subject to those provisions. So it's not, it's not an attempt to punish the broad group of tenants who are operating illegally.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
And that clarifies that if that's, if that's the case, and that's the way that code enforcement will occur, then we're okay with those conditions. I just thought that they needed, the language needed to be enhanced.
Any other questions on this side?
Yes, I just.
Laura?
I'm sorry, I have another, I have another question. Can you tell me of the, of the 15 live-work units that are proposed, do you have prospective or active tenants for all of these spaces, or some of these you anticipate you're going to have tenants for the spaces?
It's a, it's a little bit of a mix of both on that. They were all occupied at one point, probably at the beginning of this application process, they were, they would have been occupied, but over time, the, the owner has chosen not to fill the spaces while the use permit is pending, and, and so a few of them have been vacated through attrition, and we plan on, on taking advantage of that because putting in fire, fire separation and electrical is highly disruptive, so it's good to have a few spaces that we can, I describe that as headrooms, so we can, we can move people around kind of as we're doing disruptive work in the spaces in order to make them safer.
Do you have a specific number on how many are vacant right now?
Well, interesting, because you pointed out B1 and B2, which at one point in time, when they were commercial with two separate units, and they're being combined into one unit. So B2 is, B1 and B2 are occupied, A2 is not occupied, and D2 is not occupied, and 110 is not occupied. So I would have to say that of the 15 units, two of them don't exist yet, but they're replacements for 270 and 280. So, so I always think of them as just replacements, right? But, so there would be three vacant units. When I work it the other way, it adds up to 11 occupied units, so.
Is that it on this side for questions? Am I right? Michelle? Or Phil? Phil?
You were very succinct in presenting, you know, this, your owner's concerns, and I appreciate that. I just wanted, are you, you're not just a tenant, right? You're, you have some expertise, or are you a manager, or caretaker, or what's your, what's your situation with the property?
I'm, I'm a tenant, okay? But I'm, I'm working, I have a vested interest, because I want to stay a tenant. I had to leave a previous space, which was in Fairfax, and I had to move here, and, and I liked the live-work concept, and this is, this is how I got there. So, so my interest is having this property brought up to code and made legal live-work. So I've been aiding, doing that with what, I have, but I do have a background quite, quite far in construction and, and project management, so.
It's appreciated. Just one overall question about, what is the owner's concern about having more affordable units or having the deed restrictions exactly? Because if, even if it, so if we went six months, as you're saying, and I'm not even sure, I want to ask staff about that. If we went six months and then put the restriction on, then the restriction would be, you know, further in the future. So I'm just concerned, what is the concern of the owner about that issue?
When the staff report was presented, it identified two units, which I, I think the target rent was the primary parameter, and that building is probably the oldest and in the worst shape of all the buildings. So my first response was, the covenant will outlive the structure it was designed to protect, and, and when these buildings are rebuilt over time, they will probably be rebuilt into other types of housing, as, and will be brought up before the commission and as other types of housing. So we did, we wanted to pack the covenants all in one, one area, so they wouldn't be spread around among all four buildings.
Okay, thank you.
So I do think that this is a cluster of artists and musicians, and so I agree with you about that, and I'm just wondering, looking at the site plan, had anybody thought about doing improvements where some of the central courtyard areas became formalized into display areas for the art, or seating areas, or something a little bit more formal to draw out some of that work?
At present, Commissioner, the courtyards are not addressed at all by the use permit. The walkways, the entries, and the parking areas are, the side yards are. The, the practice with the courtyards has been that they've been paved with pavers and, and used for outside activities. The first one was at Soul, okay? Soul at one time was a restaurant, and that used to be outdoor seating for the restaurant, and that kind of has snowballed down that, that row there, so the other courtyards have been made nicer.
And so we're looking at this board and batten wall replacement, which looks like school, and so what is your thinking about the wall, the new wall on number eight facing the baseball field, and the new wall on 12 facing the parking lot being a different building material?
I don't know of a new wall on building 12. On building eight.
So it's just being converted?
Yeah.
But you're adding windows?
We're adding egress windows on the side opposite the standard entry door, because if someone is in the back of the unit during the fire, that they need an alternative way to get out. So there's two egress windows total being installed on the backside in order to accommodate that. The, the height of the sill is six feet right now, which is above code.
Going back to my question regarding a different siding on eight, the new construction, what do you think of that?
Eight, over time, used to be an area where students would assemble before they entered classrooms, so it was a overhanging area, approximately seven and a half feet wide, and what that has become is it's been attractive for transients and, and homeless to go there. So some of the tenants have put up these ad hoc cedar fences, and what we want to do is dress that up a bit and make it consistent with the visual that the rest of the building has, and that's where the board and batten with the, with the same paints that we specified, so it matches, so it looks kind of like it was done at the same time.
On the last planning commission meeting, we talked about the garbage area being, needing kind of to be reworked with kind of like a rain enclosure and showing recycling, just a little bit more formal, and tying into kind of the, opening up the pathway between the sidewalk where students are often coming and walking through the baseball field to the side path, going from eight over to the tennis court area here to get home, but we're not seeing that in here, is that, what was your thinking about doing improvement for that?
Well, that was not part of the scope of what we were proposing here, but it did come up when we were doing the preliminary lighting plan, is because that, that, that walkway there, there is a curb, and at one moment at the last meeting, we were talking about running the fence all the way around, but that was, that was not, did not have a very nice reception. So what we did is took away the fence, and, and because there are entryways going to those units there, that we needed to light it, and that light would then be able to clearly show where the curb is. The curb is, would have been a tripping hazard. Actually, the curb is the edge of the property, so the pathway you're talking about is, is there'll be light spillage, kind of deliberate light spillage onto that path.
And so with the conversion to mixed use, are you thinking that there will be additional rooftop HVAC required that we're not seeing today?
The, there would be, expected that there would be some type of heating cooling unit for the new, two new, two new units, eight, eight A3 and eight A4, although some of the units simply use windows as their, as their ventilation, and they have console heaters or wall heaters for their heating, and that has not been identified at this time first. But those two units, since they're new building envelopes, would probably have to be run through the Title 24 process.
Any other questions for the applicant?
One more about the housing issue. So, so I take it from your last comment with the last commissioner, if, if all of the units proposed by staff are located within the building that you identified, then that's acceptable? The newest building?
The, the, the new, building eight, which would be the, where we're identifying the two units, we were asked at the first meeting for one or two units. That's, that was actually the dialogue going on between the commission and myself. So we settled on two units, we saw that there was another one that had a target rental rate over in building 12, but the spaces that are in building eight, the other spaces in building eight possibly could be affordable, but they would have to be affordable at a one- or two-bedroom level, not as a studio level. And that would be, B, B2 would be a one-bedroom format.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more question. Is there any consideration of opening that, that parking lot gate that's been shut for a long time?
That's out of my, I, I don't know about that one. That has been attractive, the current management, the owner, and, and before my time there, I understand that it was a gathering place, and there was some vandalism and theft going through that area. I know that at the last meeting, and I know you weren't here, Commissioner Green, but it did come up that perhaps a camera or some type of motion detected lighting, because there will be motion detected lighting on the campus, because we'll probably have to increase lighting levels when there's activity. But so far, we don't have direction from the owner to, to open that gate back up again.
And just thinking from an egress-ingress perspective, in emergencies, you need all the opening, I mean, you have tenants now, so, and they're, they're at night and all that, so it's a safety issue, that's all.
That would be something for the commission to decide and to add as a condition if, if so deemed, deemed to do, if you deem it to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thanks. I'm now, I'm now going to open it up for public comment. Hold on. Yes, so, thank you. So I'm going to open this up if anyone has public comment on this, and it would be limited to three minutes. If you could come up and state your name if you'd like, so we can get it for the minutes. Does anyone wish to speak?
And just as a point of order, when are we going to get the six-month update from staff, whether that's accurate?
We'll do that when we bring it back.
Hi, Mallory Guide, Willow Avenue. I just want to say for the overview, the artists and the musicians and people who do crafts and people who need affordable housing are getting kicked out of every place, and I think maybe when I was on the design review board, we were talking about doing something to that property, making stores and houses, and my heart sunk. I, I did not want to see that place get changed. It's such a hard place for Fairfax, and it's, it's, it's so much about the town, and I know you guys really do a great job, and you do your due diligence, but I also want the edges softened, so people can continue to live there in a really good way, and not have every, absolutely everything perfect for whatever the codes, you know, whatever you guys are discussing. And I just, I just really want to keep, so much of Fairfax is not Fairfax anymore, and it's changing, and this place is so important to keep it that way, and to keep the people who are living there in a way that they can afford to, to not have to worry about it later, and to have a landlord who's actually, has a heart to think about it, and I, I just want everybody to make those decisions from the heart as well as from the rules. Thank you.
Mallory, can you push the little button? Anyone else wish to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Kristen, and I'm one of the tenants at School Street. I'm in 12C2. I have a therapeutic space where I live-work and have healing sessions, and then I'm also an artist, and I sell my pottery at Urban Garden, and I also do artistic healing work with people, and so I really want to advocate for it being a creative space. At this point, I work on a lot of my pottery over in Berkeley, but I have two tables out front of my unit, and I've been advised to keep it really small and not obscure, but I've had so many people approach me and stop and want to talk about it, and I, I love the courtyard right there where there's bonsais, and when there's all the plants, and I would really like to advocate, like you said, for more sanctioned spaces, for, for creating in the public eye, and for, for, for having the space be a real cultural and artistic contribution to Fairfax. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Holly Beatty, and I currently reside at 10C, School Street. I'm a head of household, a single mother, have an 18-year-old boy, 16-year-old daughter, who have sometimes lived with me there. I have a really beautiful unit that has a large main space and then three other rooms. One is kind of like a bedroom, and there's a kitchen, there's a bathroom, and I work as a shaman, and I do life coaching and healing for people one-on-one. So I have a space that I use where individuals come in, and we have one-on-one life coaching sessions. I've done this for 12 to 15 years. And other cities where I had a home that I was paying for, and then I had a yoga studio slash healing. cities where I had a home that I was paying for, and then I had a yoga studio slash healing space where I had two rents. And here I have one place where I can raise my children and feel safe and also see my clients. And it's about it cuts my total rent at least by a quarter that I would have otherwise. And at the same time, I'm able to have large groups of people come in and do workshops. And then we can have social experiences where we have live music playing, the kirtan kind. So it's like a spiritual healing teaching sort of workshop. And I have a place where there's space outside where I've decorated it, and there's tables, and people can come and sit and be and even people that don't come to my space come and sit in front of my unit, and they comment on how nice it feels and how peaceful they feel when they walk by and stop by. And on a number of occasions, I've had people wandering, looking for help, not knowing where to go. And somehow, they found themselves in front of my door because it felt nice. And I think that School Street has something really special. You know, before there were towns that put on paper what the code should be, there were landlords that sometimes did the right thing, and sometimes landlords that didn't. And that's why codes needed to be created, because sometimes landlords didn't do the right thing. But Fred is a very unique individual. He came up from the bootstraps, and he remembers what it was like to be that way. I know I'm not the only single mother that he's helped find a place and just on a handshake and a good feeling inside of the heart. And sometimes when it's been challenging for me, he's actually coached me through how to get through those hard times. I don't know who else in Fairfax has such a great person that's helping them stay and thrive as Fred is. He's actually there on a personal level. So I think what's important is that it's not just about having checks, boxes that you can check and say it fills a hole, but actually, the way that he's running the place is actually very special, too. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to clarify, you're in 10C?
Yes.
So the guidelines that were submitted to us was that the 2019 rent guideline for that unit was $3,700 monthly rent. Is that what you pay?
That is what I pay.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd just like to say, if I was to try to get a apartment for me and my two children right now, that would be three bedrooms. I probably couldn't get anything for less than $2,500 above that. And then to also pay for a space to do what I do, I probably would be around $4,000. So I feel like I'm getting a pretty good deal.
Can you turn that button off? Thanks. Any other members of the public wish to speak? If not, I'll bring it close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or additional questions for staff. First one would be the six month cup.
So you know, that's in the that is in the code. And I the years I've been here, there are uses that needed use permits that the commission was not sure how it was going to play out. And they would put the six month review in. And there's other use permits that they did not require that six month review. So I think it's in your purview, whether you do it or not. And we don't have any I don't I don't feel specifically either way, whatever way you want to go.
Yeah. And to further confirm, I think there may be some confusion about when to apply conditions that we would intend to go forward. And staff's position would be were this to be approved, that we would, at the time of that approval, set forth the conditions that we would go forward with. Now, it may be that your commission decides, yes, we want to do the six month review to just see how things are are working. And at that time, you know, reserve the right to adjust conditions or add additional ones, maybe remove some if so desired. But the idea with the affordability, for example, is that that would be set if that's your commission's determination. In terms of the units and things like that, there's ways to cope with that also. For example, we're seeing a great deal of conversation at a state level where there are older structures that need to be either extensively remodeled or even rebuilt. And the state in their regulations have or their statutes have said, look, if you're going to be removing tenants, you should provide for them equivalent units. So if that were to come to pass, that would be the expectation is just that if we are doing it, it should be going on permanently, but it wouldn't be an impediment necessarily to remodeling or reconstructing the space.
And, you know, I agree with the with the audience that's talked about having outdoor spaces for the artwork. And so if you can, I mean, I can probably come up with different language. Our intention with not having things stored outside is when I walked around there, there were beds, you know, beds bed headboards and things stored outside. That's what I was trying to prohibit with the that one condition. There were, you know, chairs that weren't outdoor chairs. It was obviously people's personal possessions that they were storing outside. I'm not necessarily opposed to, you know, outdoor tables that are set up or an area where someone might want to do artwork, if that's obviously what's happening. We just don't want personal possessions and the business, like supplies and stuff, you know, if there's clay, we don't want it stored outside, you know. That was our intention with that condition.
Michelle?
I'm sorry, I wasn't following what just happened. So was is what he said was that the CL zone, the conditional use permit? Well, no, let me just go to what does the code say in CL zone that the use that the approval is only good for six months, or that there's an opportunity for review, an opportunity for review, or it must be reviewed?
Well, it makes
And it says that for that review, that what we that we have to reapprove it, or it says what? What does it say?
Yes. It says, uses shall be granted for periods of no more than six months initially. The planning commission may approve extensions.
Is that in the CL?
Yes.
Can you give me a site?
Yeah, 17 point, actually, Rick did, but I'll repeat it. 17.092.050G1.
And so a condition could be written to say that it's initially good for six months, but if certain things comply, then it can be effective for ongoing or whatever. You can craft a condition. Okay, thank you.
I think you could, yeah.
Well, if that if that word is shall, then I'm not sure we have discretion.
Well, let's put it this way, the town has has not done that in the past. They've used it when they've when they are not certain that a that a use is going to, you know, when they they've had no experience with the type of use, and they're not sure how it's going to work out, they've automatically put in the six month review. But there are other use permits that have been granted without a six month review.
But those other use permits would have been applicable in other zoning. I mean, I haven't seen
Oh, you're thinking it's just in limited and not in like central?
That's what I'm that's what I'm that's would be a question.
Let me check. That could be possible. I'm going to check right now.
Because we've talked about that in the downtown commercial with other businesses.
Yeah, I'll take a look. I'll take a look right now. That's a very good point.
It could be a consent calendar item in six months, and we don't really have to oh, we would have to open it, wouldn't we? Okay.
You know, after the discussion, I and I think we need to then your discussion with the with the testifier, I think we need to change modify the language of 31 and 32 conditions to make it clear that it either primarily or only applies to the offending unit. But, you know, I mean, so there's ways that we need to clarify that. And I don't know if you want to leave it to legal to to change that, or I could suggest maybe adding at the end of 31, as it relates to that tenant, or and then 32, at the end of it says their unit as needed. I just think I just agree with with Okay.
Question, you want me to stop? Go ahead. I can't do two things at once. While she's looking that up, any discussion of of this? I have some thoughts, but go ahead.
I have an issue that I would like to review with the commission and staff. I understand things are in flux here, and these are improvements that over the years have been done without any review or permit or any concern for health and safety. And so I don't I don't believe that a six month review is inappropriate. We've done it in several instances where there's a new use, and it gives us an opportunity, if there is a problem, to take a look at it. But what I wanted to bring up is that the plans we have today are much better than what we were looking at last month. I see they've incorporated egress windows and eliminated shared bathrooms, which is a code requirement. And I very much appreciate staff's work in providing background information on other live work units and also the clarification of the code requirements for for shared bathrooms, which obviously is critical for this project. In in looking at the floor plans, I can see that how the units, how the spaces were cut up into units. And I appreciate the approximately 50% split of live versus work space within the units. The concern I have is that every single unit has a kitchen and a bathroom immediately adjacent to the kitchen. You step out of the toilet and into your kitchen sink, to put it grossly. And it seems to me that I know these are not huge. Well, for the owner, it's probably a huge budget item, these improvements. But I believe that the units could be significantly improved by swapping out the location of the restrooms. In most instances, the restrooms are side by side, three in a row, right along the center of a space. And it would probably not cost any more to swap out one restroom for another. I'll give you one example, but I can I can give you the same example in every single unit. But if we look at eight A four, just as an example, eight A four, the unit on the bottom right, you walk in to a work area, this is one of the affordable units, and then you make a left turn, and it goes into there's a tiny sink. I wouldn't call it a kitchen. It's more of a kitchen counter. And then I see the bed over on the opposite the kitchen, and then the bathroom door is just right there. And I think if those two side by side bathrooms were switched, it would give so that you would enter the middle bathroom in suite A4A and have a closed door, giving you a nice corner of a space. That's a small one. It's if we look at there's some other units where you can see it makes a much more dramatic difference. For example, in suite suite 10, let me find a better one. Okay, suite 12C2. 12C2 is the same situation. And I understand that they're trying to maximize the workspace. But again, you have the bed in the kitchen and the bathroom within 10 square feet of each other. If the bathroom I have the mic on. Okay, got it. I think you see my point. 12C1. Again, you walk out of the bathroom right into the kitchen, whereas if the bathroom was just lowered more into the workspace than the kitchen and the living room, the kitchen and the living room could be it would just without any more money, just swapping bathrooms from one area to the swapping the doors, moving them slightly over, you would create a much more livable and pleasant space. And that would be my suggestion for just about all of these units.
Through the chair, we could possibly come up with a condition that says that the distance between the access to the bathroom and any eating area shall be maximized or something like that, so that when we're going on a unit by unit basis, looking where the doorways are.
And I'm happy to leave that to staff and for the final building plans to come in. These are minor modifications that would enhance the livability of your units and their income potential moving forward, if it's a much more user friendly space.
Linda, did you have a chance? Are you still researching?
No, you are absolutely correct that that language is only found in the limited commercial. It is not included in the central or the service commercial. But I have a theory on that, because they adopted an ordinance where they were allowing the planning director to make determinations of what could actually be, you know, if someone proposes a use that's not listed as a conditional use, they included language in the central commercial and service commercial. And I believe that that was when they took that language out. But it doesn't really matter. It's not in there now. So that's specific to the limited commercial zone, the six month review.
Oops, sorry. Any other thoughts before I?
Before you?
No, go ahead.
I have some specific language changes to some of the conditions. I don't know if you want those now. But as an overall as an overall theme, you know, we're doing this, I guess it's just about the first time we've done this kind of thing in Fairfax. I kind of agree that it's a Fairfax kind of thing to do also. And one of the concerns is that this so when you have an elderly owner who may eventually pass this property to someone completely strange to all this deed restrictions, that's what they're for, is to keep future owners keeping the place as it is. And so the theme that we want to do that would encourage, it seems to me, the use of deed restrictions for the affordable housing. Now, it's great that we can go through and define affordable, not affordable, low, middle, and, you know, etc. But they are not officially applicable to anything, really, except the rent, which is a good guide for the rent. But if they're going to be rent restricted, and the idea here is that it should remain that way, kind of an artist colony idea, which is terrific, you know, wonderful idea, then deed restrictions, I'm not actually suggesting we have onerous condition of this, but that it be thought that deed restrictions then would be more applicable. But I do have some specific language changes to the conditions, if you want those now.
Can we hold off on that? Because I'm not sure that we've discussed, you know, approval, not approval, continuance, that type of thing yet. So maybe
Okay, one more point, then, if it was mentioned. I would like to add perhaps a condition that says that the back stair ingress egress ingress purposes for safety, fire, etc., that those back stairs or the front gate, whatever, be opened.
Stairs by the lumberyard?
Yes, stairs by the lumberyard be open. Thanks. Can describe it that way.
So how did you want to spend this time, Chair, just to clarify before I open my mouth?
Well, let me let me comment a little bit then, because my thoughts on this are we've had lots of questions. we've had lots of questions. We had the applicant provide something yesterday that addresses many of the things that were in the staff report and the resolution, not only the building, I mean, the, the building permit and flagging or tagging that, but also, you know, the lighting, but also the landscaping bond piece, the deed restriction piece. They, in addition to that, had an update, updated Table D. So with all of that and some of the, you know, what we've talked about today, I was thinking that I don't have enough time with those changes and what the applicant has just submitted in the last day to address this either from an approval or denial or any changes to the reso. So I was thinking of asking, you know, in the comments that everybody else has made, having the outdoor area, I was thinking of another extension. So I just wanted to, because I just don't feel comfortable. We also have Building 6 where there's, we have a medical dispensary and living units, so, and we haven't talked about, you know, pros and cons of that as, as well, but I noticed that's in there. So it was, you know, I was thinking in my mind of, of an extension. So I just wanted to throw that out there for the rest of the commission to consider before we get into talking about specifics on the reso.
If I could also interject very quickly, and this is not to tell your commission what to do, obviously, but I'm sure some of your commissioners, it's amazing that diligence and dedication sat through the council meeting last night and that's one of the things I'll be discussing in my director's report. But I have six major priorities that are going to be landing on your commission's desk, some as soon as the commission can get around to it. So it's just, at some point, it's just a question of competing priorities, but...
Duly noted, Ben.
Laura? I just wanted to share, I was having the same thoughts as you because I, I have some other concerns that I wanted to express too, that I think that we've made progress since the last application, but I still think that there's some issues that need to be worked out. And I think the deed, the deed restriction is an important one because I, I myself, if I was the owner of this property, I would want to make sure that I understood the implications of tying, you know, limiting the ability to collect rent on certain, for 55 years is, that's a really long, that's a really long term. I've also got concerns about the portion of, we've got live-work to the rest of the complex, the site. Because originally, and I asked staff some of these questions, how, we were, nine units were dedicated in the, in the general plan, our housing, which at 36, that's about 25% of it was kind of, if you think about it, the portion. And I didn't, I thought 15 just seemed to be too much. And so that's why I wanted to ask, how many, how many units are really kind of being occupied? So maybe 12, I think, is a more appropriate number, at 33%. Because 15, that was like 42%. I just thought that just seemed to be, to be too much. And I also had, a couple of the units seemed to be more than, the workspace was more than 50% in conflict with the building code and I would like to see that resolved. Maybe there's a way to reapportion the, the split between the spaces. But those, those were things that I was kind of trying to resolve and wasn't quite there yet on the application.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is there another option, is there an option to do something other than continue it? I mean, if we, if we approve this tonight, can it be amended? I mean, it sounds like the six-month rule doesn't apply to us.
No, it does.
Oh, it does? I'm sorry, okay, so I had it backwards. So we can actually revisit this. Okay, so that, that being said, I, I am supportive of this project. I think it's great that this owner and the tenants are coming out into the light and trying to, you know, be above board and get this done. I think, I think some, an occupancy or, or a use of this kind is very complicated and I think, I think we, we should let the agencies and the experts figure out some of the, I don't want to call it minutia, but, but the regulations and the guidelines and the requirements and maybe, maybe you do go and talk to the housing authority because I'm not, I'm not sure what the issue still is here, that the rent might be too low or that you can't really apply the housing authority standard to a, a live-work space because it's not just live. So I think this is very complicated and I think that this can go on a long time. I think if we're trying to approve the change of use so that you guys can start to correct and improve and start the process, that's a great thing. I don't know, I, I feel comfortable approving this tonight if we kind of hunker down and try to wordsmith some of these conditions and maybe revisit it again in six months.
Norma?
I have been on the commission many times before and I have serious concerns about using the six-month review in that way, given that we're talking about corrections of health and safety and an expense to rearrange these units and create kitchen and restroom facilities. The, the six-month review is not intended to have them go ahead and build it out and then in six months, we come back and tell them, "That's not working. You have to rip out those restrooms and relocate them," or, "There's a problem." For whatever reason, I, I think we need to get the specifics down as closely as possible to, to get them right. And the six-month review isn't so much in terms of making those expensive structural improvements, but in terms of looking at the property management plan to see if there are issues with how they're managing the property. How, are they allowing more garbage to be stored in all the hallways and walkways? Are the, are the, do the walkways have sufficient light not to do the basic design and conceptualization at a later date? I think this is the time to get the design and the concept down.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask, so are we trying to approve a conditional use permit? Or is this a design review? Did I, it's all, it's all design review, is, all of it is, okay. So, Norma?
So, a little, a little piece of information, because I deal with medical devices sometimes. Toilets can squirt up to 30 feet, okay? They've found toothbrushes 30 feet away in the same room with, you know, germs. So that's the issue. And Norma, I hear you, I hear that, I do. So it's an issue. It's, it's just a health and safety issue, more, I think, for the tenants. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if we, I haven't heard from architects and engineers that we need to necessarily rearrange the position of rooms, which I don't think is free. Last contractor I talked to, it wasn't. But that's, that's, just wanted to bring that up.
So, a question for staff on the building plans. The bathrooms that are there, I know some of the units are being moved because there's no shared bathroom. So there's some bathrooms that are going to be built. The rest of the units, are the bathrooms already built out as the plans reflect?
Some are built out, some are not, yeah.
Through the chair, that is precisely the problem with this, "Let it go and let's roll with whatever comes along" approach.
So, Norma, would you be in favor of an extension on this then, to the next month, to, to get clarification on some of these things, including what the applicant has submitted in their letter of yesterday? That I don't think we've addressed entirely, or some of the other changes?
That would be my recommendation, rather than going on until midnight, beating this thing to a pulp.
Michelle?
I'm in support of that, but I'm also in support of what Commissioner Kurland has brought up, which is that the project has come, made some improvements, but I still think it's lacking in addressing key components. We've heard today from the applicant's representative now that lighting is getting defined, that HVAC on the roof is proposed. We haven't seen any of those. I do believe that we need better clarity over the entry points and I think that the, I think this, I'm, I'm, I think something more needs to happen with the architecture, but I just didn't, I couldn't spend enough time trying to redesign it for them. And I don't want to go expensive, but there's just something and that's why I was trying to focus on key elevations. But in terms of the unit split, I, I don't think, I'm leaning towards 50/50. I'm, I'm looking at a greater percentage of commercial here and I'm looking for the highest number of affordable units for the long term. I think that's the way that we can maintain the affordability here and that I, I don't mind the idea of them being in specific buildings that are the newest buildings, I think that's fine. But I'd like them to be a variety of types so that people who come from a variety of family sizes have the opportunity to have long-term affordability and be able to live in our community.
Phil?
Yeah, so the, the letter from the, is that, now, I am confused a little bit, I have to say. The owner, the applicant is Fred Azazi. The owner is listed on the plan as Azazi and Associates. And in the letter, lending to the confusion is a signature, Azazi and Associates LLC. So what, do you, I guess I could direct to staff. Do you know what the title is, I presume? Right, and is it, is it an LLC or is it an individual?
You know, I'd have to go back and look at what's listed in the tax assessor's role. I haven't done it recently, so I honestly can't recall.
Okay, so that's one point of confusion.
But maybe in the file, I can...
Then, then there's others that, that are admittedly brought up by this last-minute request. However, I thought that we kind of clarified some of this. So Condition 31 and 32, you know, at least you said, I forget your name, I'm sorry. Rick, so you said, you know, "That sounded right." I think we need to change some language there. Lighting, you know, I think you guys are going to come to an understanding about overlighting areas and having, you know, and dark sky? Sounds like you want to do dark sky, that's great. You know, and I hear you about the calendar next year too, so I'm kind of concerned about that and getting this project underway because the sooner it's legalized, formalized, and fixed up, the better for the town. So, so those, those, those issues, I thought, were kind of clarified tonight. I could agree with a continuance because of this last-minute information. But also, I mean, even this complex chart, staff says, you know, you guys aren't, aren't overoccupied as far as the international IPMC is concerned. So, you know, I, maybe I'm more of the way there than some of you are. But, you know, it is also a little bit of a shocker that 1,300 bucks is considered low cost.
Can I ask a question, just in terms of continuance? How long can this be continued? Or how many times? Because I, I think the big picture, because I'm also, I mean, I understand design review and I looked at the design of the exterior. So does, under the design review discretion, are we locating sinks and counters and things like that? Because there are certain requirements that are taken care of by the mechanical, you know, the, the building codes and mechanical codes for ventilation. And some of these, I agree that there is room for improvement on the layouts. In some areas, the spaces are just too small and it's, I think it's a matter of clustering all your plumbing, I think is what's going on here. So, you know, I, I'm concerned about saying at this point that we're going to look at every layout as part of our design review. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's, you know, how detailed do we want to get in the clarifications and the redesign or the, you know, the information that's missing? Because I could see this going on for a long time and the permits themselves. I mean, once the change of use is approved, this is a long-term project. You know, it's not six months in complete. It's, I think we're looking at a lot of different things here before implementation occurs. So I guess the question is, how long can this be continued before somebody has to start paying?
I'm sorry, before they have to start paying? We have, we have Streamlining Act requirements, right? And so they just submitted revised plans November 12th, so that would put us, yeah, to January 12th, which isn't, so...
Unless the applicant...
Voluntarily...
Voluntarily, which...
Right.
I mean, I think, you know, from, you know, as, as one of the commissioners said, I think we're in support of efforts like this. This is the first live-work. You know, when you, when you mention our housing element, the only place to me it talks about looking at live-work is on the, in Central Commercial, where it talks about live-work possibly on the section of downtown where Fairfax Market is now. It talks about potentially looking that area for live-work when I looked at the housing element, so not in CL. So, I mean, I think it's important that, this is a large effort. We're supportive of the idea. We're making progress on it. But I think it also, because of all those things, we should make sure that we get it as right as we can and, and that's why I think having a continuance for another month, you know, it sounds like would get us there, especially when you look at some of the things that were just submitted yesterday from the applicant and, and we haven't even addressed some of those things in, in the request here. So that is why I would look at another month if the applicant was agreeable to that because I'm, me personally, I'm, I'm not there yet for what we have before us.
So it sounds like she's got a majority of the planning commission agreeing that, yes, a continuance is an opportunity, but it's really now up to us to call up the applicant, ask if he's willing to extend it to the next planning commission, which is beyond his date and that he would have to submit a letter to staff for the record for that purpose. Then the next question would be whether we've given adequate direction on what, what we're asking to have returned and whether additional discussion needs to occur amongst us this evening to clarify key points, such as what Commissioner Kurland brought up on... evening to clarify key points, such as what Commissioner Kurland brought up on the percent on the inside, or whether we need attorney feedback on law, or, you know, whatever the key issues are, as well as plan level modifications and what we really expect upon its return. So we almost have to have those discussions before asking, asking the applicant, because once we've made those conclusions, then the applicant might say, well, no, I don't want to continue, and I want a decision on what you've got before you.
Yeah, one other aspect is, I think it may be optimistic to assume we can get this back on the commission's agenda on the January 16th meeting, because as of next week, the town hall will be closed until Friday, January 2nd. So practically speaking, staff will only have one week, the following week, to address any of these issues.
Sixteenth is the deadline for receiving.
Yeah, and, and January 6th is the deadline for receiving application materials. So practically speaking, we're probably looking at the February 20th meeting. So if, I mean, in your commission's deliberations, if you want to do that, just understand that we're going to be asking the applicant for probably a, a non-specified continuance, and then we'll just see when the material comes in, and that would either be at the Feb, well, likely at the February meeting, possibly the March one, but not the January one.
Or is there an opportunity for a special meeting next month? In order to, if there's other, if we're, if we're under a tight rein to handle a number of items this year, and we've got this one as well, maybe we need to push it out a week, if we can all do it.
So do we have an agenda for the 16th, given the holidays and all? Do we have an item that's?
Yes, we do. At our barn burner meeting on the ADUs last night, there was specific direction from your council that they would like the planning commission to dive right into revisiting modifications to the regular ordinance, you'll recall.
Good.
Yes. It was, there was very much a meeting of the minds, but there's a heavy lift there. I'm not sure how much information we'll be able to provide, given the constraints I just mentioned.
Well, let's, let's, as Michelle said, let's go over the items that we want to relook at to see what we have, and then look at the potential for a special meeting for this, possibly, or depending on what else is coming up in, in January, and then see if the applicant is willing to go for the continuance. So with that in mind, I want, there's on the submittal from yesterday, there's an updated Table D that was attached. So I'd like some clarity on that as far as the numbers, because one of the things that I know there was a concern when we used that international table about the amount of people in each unit. So I know staff may not have had a chance to relook this.
So is the direction that you want us to see if the number of people they're proposing complies with the?
Well, not if it, I think, with the what?
With the property management code regulations?
Yeah, and it probably does, because the property management code is far, is far too liberal.
So you want us to just verify that?
In my sense, so I just want a review of that, because there's less numbers of people here than you had had in the staff report, I think, the total.
In, in the applicant's table?
I just want, yeah.
So you just want us to verify that we, that we, that we interpreted the property management code correctly?
And concur.
Okay.
Well, and you concur with that submission of the table and the numbers? Because you also had in the staff report a comment about rooms, bedrooms over 100 square feet would have not more than three individuals in it, and it was unclear to me whether that was like per bedroom or for the whole unit. So I just want some review of that and clarity on that. The items 34 and 35, covenants and deed restrictions, there seems to be not a meeting of the minds there between, you know, being, accepting of a deed restriction. There's also language in this where it talks about having a separate approach to maintaining rents. That talks about a new renter coming in with the same rent as the old tenant left with, I believe, and then also switching out, if one live work kind of went out of the picture, that they could then put a new one into effect. So I just want that reviewed as far as what's in their request. They talk about landscaping and not having the bond on here, I believe.
So you want us to get the applicant to clarify what, what they're stating in their letter?
And what their request is versus what is in the staff report and the resolution. There was mention of HVAC, I believe, on having the plans addressed where that would go.
Do you want to see a roof plan with the HVAC? Is that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There was discussion about not allowing outdoor activity, but there seems to be a desire for that, so having that identified.
Could I add something to that point about the outdoor communal space? It would be nice to get a site plan that shows all of those exterior spaces, including the trash and those closed-off stairways, to have a better understanding of the, there's a lot of space there. And some people, as, as some people have mentioned, have done some very lovely seating areas that, that are, are very attractive and pleasant, and then, of course, some people just use it to, to store their stuff. So a site plan would be good. And as the chair said, the conditions are, the materials we received, like yesterday and today, there, there's really been no clarification, and it seems like the situation has changed from the letters that we have received. I also think that the, I'd like to see some variety, at le, the only, the only attractive feature to the exterior is the paint, because it's a schoolhouse, it's a, what, 50-year-old schoolhouse building? So at least something to do with the paint and, and some landscaping could, could really make a difference on the overall appearance. And I'm also concerned about the garbage with so much new residential. I think that one debris box out in the corner is not going to cover it. Another thing we might look at, given the situation with the fact that there are units currently being worked on, we don't know which ones, we don't know what they're doing, we don't know what the status is, we could split the baby and take a look at the units that are currently being worked on to get some agreement on what's going on there, and then split it into, come back at another time with additional units. I don't know, that's just another option.
Laura? Items you would want to see coming back?
No, I think everyone's, I, I agree with, and then maybe Michelle wants to add something about the, I think her point was good about the design review, and I think that was what Norman was hinting at also.
I'd just like to add, there was some discussion about old floors being asbestos encased and capsulated, and if we could, and lead paint. You know, not from an enforcement standpoint, but from a health and safety standpoint for the people there, I think maybe we should get a little bit of, some kind of inventory or clarity about what, you know, what the conditions are. And I think that's something we need to be concerned about, too.
And that may be something, when we come back, that we address as, as part of the, the conditions, too, with the resolution versus having the ability and the time now to do any kind of environmental assessment of, of those existing units. I don't know what all is involved in an environmental assessment between now and, and the time we would come back to make those determinations versus having something as a condition going forward. And maybe you all can, can address that to us now, is that something that, I mean, I think we all agree up here, it sounds like, that we want, we're concerned about the health and safety of the residents, and we want to make sure that it's, you know, an environment is, is healthy for them. So is it better to address that?
Yeah, we would probably just include that as a condition and have somebody who's qualified to do those type of inspections.
That, that would go through the Bay Area Air Quality Department. You, you would have to get lab testing, and you could make that a condition of the building permit. But that's at the permit, the building permit level, not the planning level. So you could put a condition, but that's kind of standard where you have demolition of old buildings is, it has to go through the Bay Area Air Quality Department, so.
Though I think it is through the chair, I think it's not that complicated to tell if there's lead paint or asbestos on the floor. You can look at it, whoa, this is fiberglass and that's asbestos.
It, it has to be tested by a lab, there has to be a report. And then there is an asbestos abatement removal plan that has to be implemented and permitted. So it's, but that's at the building level department, that, and that can take a while. So I'm not sure that, you know, we're qualified to go in and say, or the planners are qualified to go in and say that's asbestos, because Bay Area Quality would never accept that. They require a letter.
Yeah, just, just to put things in context, when you go to the Civic Center and all those beautiful red tiles that you see in the Civic Center, that's all asbestos tile. And one of the reasons why they're always kept really shiny and clean is because that's captured asbestos, it doesn't represent a health hazard as long as it's got that nice clear coat on it, and nobody's scuffing into the material. But that's an example of, yeah, there's asbestos tile, but, you know, there's hundreds or thousands of people who are walking on it daily, it's not a problem. So just to put that in context, is, you can do tests, and then, Rick referred to the encapsulization as long as it's not something where it's freeable and there's exposure risks. But as Esther also pointed out, that's, it's a standard procedure, you get the experts in, they, they do their testing and make a determination.
And then there's an abatement permit process. So it's not, you know, yes, if you keep it, but if you have construction and you are disrupting and removing, then there is a very specific way to remove it, and that's, and that's dealt.
If you're disrupting.
If you're disrupting or removing. So that's, that's like a whole different ball of wax, so.
Michelle?
So I'm still not clear right now, because we're, we've, we've come to the conclusion that we're going to continue this item, and so I'm not clear what plan revisions we're asking for and whether we're in agreement, because I think that there are some plan revisions, and then there could be some, there are condition modifications that need to be done by staff to tighten it up and to address certain things that we've heard this evening. And some of those plan modifications that maybe we've been talking about could be going into those conditions of approval. Then there's, I guess, policy issues that we're going to kick to the next meeting is what I'm, think I'm hearing. And then there are general things that we're asking staff to look at in terms of the city attorney review and looking, you know, deciding how to handle the expired conditional use permit. And so I guess I, I wanted to hear back what, what staff thinks the direction is on the plan modifications, because I'm not sure I'm clear in whether I'm in agreement with that.
So what I thought I heard people say is that they want the plans modified to increase the amount of commercial space in, in the units if it's possible, because you're not happy with the breakdown of 50/50, right? Is that correct? And then you wanted to see the bathrooms relocated per Phil's, you know, as Phil's, Ben suggested, you know, as far away as they could, could be from the kitchens, and we can check with the building department to see if there's any kind of building code requirement for a distance, right?
And I guess that would also, if you can't do that, that would also just perhaps also address where the, oh, the door is to the bathrooms.
Right.
In some of those, as Norma brought up.
If that can help keep the, yeah, keep it directed away from the kitchens. And then you wanted to see a site plan that was more specific about where the outdoor art areas might be, you wanted more detail about the, the garbage enclosure, if there's going to be a garbage enclosure, how they're going to work with the recycling, which they don't currently have, because it's just a one dumpster out there, right? There was an indication that you wanted the, the old school stairway by the, by the lumberyard to be indicated as reopened? That was something you wanted to see? Did I miss something?
We would also look at the lighting, investigate that further.
Oh, yeah, you wanted the HVAC, the roof plan for the HVAC.
And I'm just wondering that, that list. The percent of, a percentage of commercial is a policy discussion that we can have at the next meeting and could be simply addressed through the condition of approval, that the interior portions of the building must be whatever we end up agreeing, 70, whatever number we agree. The bathrooms is a, almost a building permit issue, which they can deal with, with the pulling of their building permit, and really is none of our business. The site plan and all of those other things, probably the, the art areas, I'm not clear, I mean, I, I'm not clear what we're asking them to do. We've got a site plan in front of us, do you want them to modify the plan to show the existing area where, what? To me, that could be a condition of approval that just says each individual tenant is allowed, whatever, some space in front of there, as long as there's pedestrian pathway that meets the building code in front of that. The gate, the gate, the gate opening could be a condition of approval. The, the lighting plan, we could create a condition that just says there shall be no off-lighting beyond the property, unless you want to look at a standard, a light standard and the lumens right now, and have them do a lighting plan, which could be expensive, and you might end up not liking it, and then they have to redo it at the building permit stage, which pushes up the cost of the project. So.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's asking for a lighting plan or relooked at. It sounds like that's acceptable to be worked out between the applicant and the staff and, and addressing, you know, minimum requirements for safety and all of that. I think, I think it's reasonable to ask for the site plan to address the outside spaces and the HVAC on the roofs, looking at, you know, the ability on the bathrooms to make changes there. So I think, you know, in landscaping, the garbage area, so I think there's some areas that I think are reasonable to, to relook and bring back, along with review of the applicant's submittal. And I know we probably all have, as we've looked at this, I know Phil has, I have, where we've gone through the rezo as it was, we'll probably have changes in the conditions there, but I think they're not anything that would change everything that we're looking at, other than they may be clarifying for some of the ones that, you know, that potentially we're looking at, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, but my concern is there are, maybe I'm wrong, quite a few units that are like 50/50 right now. And if you want to increase the commercial area, there, you might lose units because the residential might fall below what's required by the building code and the property management code, but.
But let me ask the question on the, then on the 50/50, because again, we, we talked about that earlier with, you know, we have some towns that do work-live, you know, where their commercial area is bigger.
I think they're dealing with much bigger units.
They also have percentages there, but that's a whole kind of policy thing on work-live, live-work and mixed use. live-work and mixed use.
Some of those talk about 750 square foot spaces.
For this project, for this project is, is it true that, that we want to look at changing those percentages if that's going to impact some of the already existing units?
I'm good with 50/50. Well, you do, okay. Yeah.
I think, yeah, but I think Laura was the one that addressed that, so let me ask.
My concern was that in the building code, it's classified as an R2. So when your commercial is more than 50%, it's not really an R2. So that's why I think that the building code had it 50/50. I mean, I mean, I'm comfortable with whatever the town wants, feels was appropriate, you know, in the situation, but I just wanted to make sure that we had thought about that component, that's all.
I think that's a good point because it sounds like the number, the 15 units they came up with, they were able to come up with because it met the R2 guidelines. Is that correct? In other words, they were able to make that work?
Into construction codes, yeah. We're not prepared to make that. I mean, the building inspector has looked at these plans and it's not, I don't think we're seeing fatal flaw issues in terms of separation and things like that. One of the benefits of having a school is that usually those buildings start out pretty well constructed from a standpoint of one hour fire or whatever. But we'll have to look at that. I think probably a more salient question is the number of units that your commission is comfortable with. It would be good to get some direction on that topic if possible.
Since I'm the one that's going to be dealing with this, so now I'm not clear. Are you saying that I would like to get some kind of clear indication from them, what ratio they're comfortable with before we're being sent back to analyze plans? So the last meeting, people were throwing out, we're okay with 50/50. Now I'm hearing that maybe that's not okay. So.
I'm still comfortable with 50/50. I think that's a safe ratio because these are all so different.
Yeah, so maybe the commission needs to vote on that because if we don't have a ratio that we can actually ask the applicant to meet, he does, he's not going to know how to modify his floor plans and we're not going to be able to check it.
So maybe I, could I ask one question of staff on that question to vote? So if this was, so this will be a precedent-setting decision. And so if this was a larger building, say it was the whole building and they wanted to do it, so if we said 50/50, would that apply? So if this was a 3,000 square foot building, the next one that comes in is 3,000.
If you say you want, you want the breakdown of the commercial to residential to be at least 50/50 and you want, and you know, the residential, the commercial can be more, but you want it to, the residential to at least, the residential to commercial not to go lower than 50/50, right?
Yes.
You would have, if you had 3,000, you could have 1,500 square feet of commercial and, you know, 50, but these are such small spaces that, I mean, they're barely getting, some of them, they're barely meeting the building code for living space area, right? And they were able to get to the 50/50, which I thought was pretty good, right?
Can we clarify, are we, Michelle, were you asking a question about the total square footage 50/50 or within the, okay, and I think we're talking about individual units ratio. So we're talking about in the individual unit, the 15 units, do we want to split the function 50/50?
And I'm saying, I understand what you just said. What I'm saying is since this is the first of many, we'll just say we don't know what's coming, that is it acceptable, do we have to, and if we all agree that 50/50 because of the small size of this total building and the units they chose are so small, would we say if this was a 5,000 square foot building is 50/50, okay?
Well, I think there's two issues here. I think one.
It's a feasibility issue. If you have a unit that's so small that if you have 60/40, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't make code, then I wouldn't want to eliminate units, really.
But I think you can, I think you can modify your, I think you can modify your conditions of approval to use language that says that you're agreeing to 50/50 on this development because of the small size of the units and it wouldn't be precedent-setting for the next project that came.
Right, and I, and I think there's, there's two issues that I heard here. One was the split within the individual units of 50/50, right? And again, we go back to work-live, live-work, mixed use. So I don't think we're, so that was one issue. And I think what we're addressing here is something that was created without approval and we're trying to see how we can make this work for the community that's there already, for the town. If this was a new building to be created, we wouldn't necessarily take this approach with that. We have the whole issue of standards for live-work, work-live, mixed use. But the other question that I heard here was too, was this amount of units too many? And that's a whole different issue to address. So right now it's looking at 15 units. We haven't discussed, you know, the, and maybe I need to ask that question now if there's any concern with a.
Can I?
Sorry.
I was going to say maybe what we need to find out is, I guess, of the 15, are only 13 occupied? Is that, are we looking to legalize the units that are already occupied or are we looking to create new spaces? Because I think the objective might be to not displace people. So we don't want to displace people, but are we also creating new opportunities? I guess that's maybe the question for the owner.
One of the questions would be when we come back to have a clear per-unit listing of what's vacant and what's filled.
Good idea.
And Rick tried to kind of address that a little, but if, that would be helpful. And then I think what I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if, since one of those buildings where there is one living unit, is building six, thank you.
Are you referring to the manager's unit?
No, I'm, no. I'm referring to building six that has one unit in it that also has the medical dispensary, the cannabis dispensary. Does anyone here have concerns with having a living unit in that same building that may have a family with kids or anything in that living unit? I'm just putting that out there.
Could you clarify, is the current living unit at number six existing and is it the same size as what we have in the plans? Okay.
Yes.
If it's existing, I say so be it.
I mean, a tenant moving in, a tenant moving in is going to know that the dispensary is upstairs.
And I'm just asking, do the rest of my commissioners have any concerns with that?
Though, the only concern I have with that unit is that the kitchen is smaller than the bathroom on one of the largest units in the entire site.
Right, but, but do you have any?
And immediately adjacent to the bathroom.
But do you have any concerns with having that living unit in building six that has a cannabis dispensary?
No.
No.
Phil?
No.
Laura?
If it's existing, I mean, I say we try, we try to work with and try to legalize it and the tenant, like I think what Norma said, I guess the tenant is aware of the dispensary, so it's their choice.
Esther?
I think it's, if it's already there, it can be there as long as the owner discloses the condition of the other tenants or the, yeah, the possible hazards.
Okay.
You know, I have, overall, I have, there's going to be ultimately, let's say 15 tenants and ultimately a set of rules for all of them. And I think it might be a great idea if the owner were to come up with some kind of booklet or easily understand, other than like the agreement and the lease. And I understand you want to put a lot of conditions and mention in the lease, but people rarely read those. I think it'd be a great idea to have some kind of tenant handbook for basic, you know, maintenance and behavior. And that might be a nice, a way of kind of not, you can't monitor so much, so then maybe the tenants at least can live under a set of rules that are easy to understand and refer to them like before I build a new wall, you know, let me look at the rules type of thing. Hopefully they'll do that. Anyway, artists, maybe not. But anyway, it's just wonderful that we have arts for art's sake here and it's a good thing and we're moving forward, even if we have to continue it, I guess, huh? And we have to ask the applicant.
So have we captured everything we want to see coming back?
One, one thing that might help the applicant, does the commission agree that we're in favor of this type of project if we can get the details worked out?
I think.
Show of hands?
Yeah.
Yes.
So at least they know they have that basic support.
But there's no guarantee because you never know what other public might show up at another hearing.
So are we good with everything we, have we captured everything we want to see coming back?
Never know.
Yes?
I think so.
I don't know if, Linda, do you have the other comment regarding like exterior material treatment as part of your list?
Yes, you guys want to see some alternatives that are more.
Or perhaps it would be the live-work units that have a color that differentiates them or a material or some detail that differentiates them from the commercial to give it.
Okay, now that's a little bit different than what, what Michelle said. She was just, the new walls, she was thinking since they're already putting up new walls that maybe there's a way to add some articulation to the building and make it look less like a school building, so.
Let's go with Michelle's.
Does everyone want to go with Michelle's? Sorry, Norma.
No, that's fine.
Yes.
That's fine.
So are we good? Okay, so now if we can ask the applicant, yes. So sir, we're in support, as you know, of this effort. Are you willing to extend the application to a time, to January or what did we decide?
January. Continue off calendar to a date uncertain. Continue off calendar to a date uncertain and provide the information that the planning commission has requested.
I have a comment before I answer your question. Ma'am, I indicated this is 58 years my work over here and nobody, as any of you tenants, put as much energy and time in this property I have. I am retired and I don't need the money. I'm five days a week over here seeing what's happening in my property, item one. Item number two, what's happening to my tenants? You guys are talking expense go up and down. I'm thinking what the hell I can do. Those people can afford to stay there. I think you guys are completely disregarding what the needs of the public over here is. You, this commission and this town came after three years of study, made some kind of arrangement. Some people made a signature, it's gone. $400,000, this town's money was spent on it. Where did it go? Now you folks are talking this room here, that room over there. Nobody wants to have better than I do because all my tear and blood is sitting down there and I want to have a community. And some people can afford with their kids or themselves be over here. I have offered some people, they sit, sleep on it days and days without collecting a penny because I have a feeling, I have a daughter. I don't want anybody in this, in this group, think about it, what the hell is going on in this town? This is the hobby of my life, is not over here for money. If I increase all the costs, I'm not going to ask the people for money. They're sleeping over there, but I'm not asking for money because I have a feeling for those people. That is the reason I'm saying, no, I will not accept it to extension. If you guys want it, register their recommendation, go ahead, otherwise leave it alone. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
So I still have concerns about the application, I mean, the submittal from the applicant.
So the question now is if the applicant is unwilling to extend it, are we willing to approve what we have before us today?
Can some of the modifications be made easily to the resolution?
I, I think that based on the consensus items I've heard from staff, that we could probably do a pretty good job of piecing together conditions. I'm not too worried about wordsmithing. I think that there was a general consensus about things like looking at the new exterior treatments, getting greater articulation. This would give staff a lot more responsibility. But in terms of lighting levels, for example, just throwing this out, that we would be looking at existing parking lot lighting and making a determination, is that adequate? Focusing more on the pedestrian areas and the lighting levels for those, you know, things like that that are really granular that I'm not worried about. We'd probably have to go back over your commission's discussions and maybe just make sure we have consensus from the commission in enough direction so that we can modify the conditions. But I truly, I haven't heard anything tonight that I say, ooh, you know, we don't have that information, maybe, and even things like how the, what, to what extent the commercial to residential ratios impact building code compliance. Those are construction code-related items that we could work with the applicant to address.
Well, and I don't think we had, after we discussed that, I don't think we had concerns of, I mean, issues with that as long as that was clear. We didn't have issues with the number of units because the understanding was that they were all filled.
Well, they had been filled and then what Mr. Hamer, excuse me if I'm putting words in his mouth, what he was saying is that so as not to displace people when you're doing some of these more disruptive works, it's good to be able to temporarily house somebody in one of the vacant units. And so they like to have two or three units that are vacant while this renovation is taking place so that they can shift people, do the work and then move them back. So I think it's not fully occupied now, but the intention is at completion, obviously it would be.
So on the applicant's letter that he submitted, he disagreed with condition number 28 related to landscaping in the bond?
Yeah, I think the question there is, it sounds like the applicant isn't, keep in mind, when we were talking about bonding, we were dealing with the fence and we were talking about revisions to the overall landscape plan.
Yeah, that should have been removed when the fence.
So probably the bond is, if we're assuming that the landscaping remains as is, then there's no bonding necessary.
So what about deed restrictions?
I think the deed restrictions is something that we would like to get some feedback from the applicant because what I'm hearing from your commission and what staff. from the applicant, because what I'm hearing from your commission, and what staff is saying, is that if you're going to have affordability, and we're, there was some consensus or agreement from the applicant, that he will voluntarily do two low-income units. But the question is, is that, as Commissioner Green noted, if you're going to do a low-income, you really need to have something in writing, i.e. a deed restriction, that would stipulate that, so that there's a clear understanding that were the property to change hands, were there to be a new tenant, et cetera, et cetera, that that affordability component would remain. I believe Mr. Azazi is sincere, certainly if you look at his current rents, you know, amazingly, those are, those meet the qualification by and large for either low income, or certainly moderate income in this county, and some of those are definitely low income. So I guess the question I would put to the applicant is, yes, we're at this point where, if we're, if the commission is considering approval, would he volunteer to say, yeah, okay, I will subject those units to deed restrictions, including the fifty-five-year
So that would be a question for the applicant, as to the deed restrictions on the two low-income units. So let me ask-
What are we doing?
Let me ask commissioners, there's a requirement in our conditions of approval that the affordable units have a deed restriction. So do you agree with that as a condition of approval?
I, I agree with that.
I think what he said is that the bank won't allow him to have a deed restriction, restricted property.
So can, can we ask staff to clarify that, and if it is-
We could certainly investigate that. I mean, I could see where, if there were certain rent structure proposed, and all of a sudden there's a limitation on that, that might affect it. I mean, I, given that it's already low income, I don't know if it would make difference in the short term, but we would certainly investigate that.
Well, let me ask you guys, was it-
And if it wasn't possible for him to work it out with his bank, we would not require it to be deed restricted. It would be voluntary.
Right, so there's that aspect of it. But was there sort of an agreement on two units? Was that how, was that one of your fundamental or conditions, or concerns, or?
Well, it's in the letter. I mean, that there, there are the two units that were described as being, yes, these will be low income.
So he indicated that he was willing to keep two low-income. My, as a staff person, my concern is, is that I hear that over and over and over and over again, throughout Marin County, and if you don't have them deed restricted, there is no way to ensure that they are really affordable. So people can say it's affordable all you want, but it, there's no guarantee, so you might as well just let that go.
So I would ask staff to get clarification on that, if that is, because again, we're looking at a commercial property that is live work, and if that is something that is doable with a bank, then I think we would, if that, you know, if it's doable with a bank, and that was a concern, then I think we should pursue that in the, in the requirements.
In the conditions, right. But if it's not possible, then it'll just be voluntary.
Does the rest of the commission agree with that?
We could reach a decision tonight, and then come back with your commission, to your commission at the next meeting for final ratification of the conditions of approval. So in other words, a decision could be rendered tonight. It's a little unusual, but I think as long as there's clear direction on what the conditions should include, we could get the final language.
But what about that section of the code that says it's going to be reviewed in six months?
Well, I think that that six-month review would also be part in parcels. We would add that six-month review in.
Then say something.
I'm not willing to go any farther with this, and I'm prepared to make a recommendation of denial on resolution two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, and be done with it for the evening. I just don't, I, we asked for a continuance, because we needed time to craft the conditions, to get questions answered, to, to work with the applicant more on outstanding issues, and I'm unwilling to be here and try to craft, there's all these conditions right now. And so I'd like to make a recommendation for denial on resolution two thousand and nineteen dash seventeen.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Nay, no.
No.
She need to point out the appeal.
Advise the applicant of his appeal period?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a ten-day appeal period, and Planning Department can provide the information on that.
Yes, and we will be returning to your commission, or actually, we'll work with the chair on the specific findings for the denial. I think we, on the affirmative side of it, the information that your commission needed in order to make a, an affirmative decision on this, that has, will not be provided. Those would be incorporated into the resolution for denial, so obviously we need to have those findings.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. Noted for the record that Commissioner Green is recusing himself from this item. For the record, Commissioner Green. As soon as he leaves, he's recusing himself.
Just for the record, I'm recusing myself from this hearing. Thank you.
But he'll be back. Okay, so the second item on our agenda is seventy-eight Bay Road, application nineteen sixteen, request for Hill Area Residential Development, Excavation and Design Review Permits for a twenty-four, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, single-family residence. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, the proposed project consists of the following: construction of a three-story, twenty-eight-foot, nine-inch-tall residential structure with fourteen hundred square feet on the upper main floor, six hundred and seventy-six square feet on the middle floor, and three hundred and ninety-nine square feet of living space on the lower floor, along with four hundred and seventy-nine square feet of unconditioned storage area, four hundred and fifty-eight square foot deck off the living room, and approximately four hundred and sixty square, sixty-five square foot living roof over the storage room on the lower floor, and improvement of the existing driveway to a width that varies from fourteen to sixteen feet, and including an expanded area to provide parking for three vehicles on the southwest side of the proposed residence. The driveway improvements and width expansion would result in retaining walls on either side of portions of the driveway that would vary from one foot to six feet in height. The total project grading consists of nine hundred and seventy-eight cubic yards of cut and three hundred and seventy-one cubic yards of fill, for a net off-haul of six hundred and seven cubic yards. The project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits: a Hill Area Residential Development Permit, an excavation permit, and a design review permit. The purpose of the Hill Area Residential Development Permit is to encourage the maximum retention of natural topographic features, minimize grading of hillside areas, provide a safe means of ingress and egress to and within hillside areas, minimize water runoff and soils erosion during and after construction, prevent loss of life, reduce injuries and property damage, and minimize economic dislocations from geologic hazards, and to ensure that infill development on hillside lots is of a size and scale appropriate to the property and consistent with other properties in the vicinity under the same zone classifications. So the location of the house at the center of the site, in an area that's already disturbed with retaining walls, pathways, and a concrete driveway accessory to the existing small studio residence, will minimize the site disturbance. The improvement of the existing driveway accessing the studio in the proposed new residence will be a benefit to existing and proposed development on the site. It will stabilize the existing driveway and adjacent cut banks that are currently not stable. Both the project geotechnical engineer and the town engineer agree that the areas above and below the existing driveway are currently potentially unstable, and the proposed widening will actually make the area safer. The proposal will result in modest widening that will also improve the access for emergency vehicles into the already developed site. There, the small portion that's, that has already been approved by the Ross Valley Fire Department to narrow to fourteen feet, is being narrowed to minimize the impacts on an existing redwood grove on the site. With regards to drainage and slope stability, the town engineers have reviewed the entire body of information provided by the applicants of the, of the project, and it's a significant amount of information, and they have determined that the project can be constructed as proposed without creating any significant geologic or hydrologic hazards for adjacent public or private properties, as long as certain conditions have been met, and the conditions have included, have been included in the resolution. The town engineers were concerned that due to the instability of the existing hillside behind the existing cottage, that the plans should also, that the building permit plan should incorporate a debris catchment wall, that will also help stabilize that hillside and keep any debris should the hillside shift from damaging that, that unit, and potentially damaging the new house. Most of the trees that are being removed for the development are for the roadway widening. There's not very many coming, I think there's only two, or maybe even one, to accommodate the new residents. The proposed structure complies with the design review criteria. It conforms to the general character of other structures in the vicinity, you know, Bay Road, the houses were built in much different periods of time, and so there's really no consistent architectural character there, there, the houses are very different. The exterior of the structure has been well articulated through the use of board and batten siding on the main mass of the structure, alternating with vertical siding proposed on the lower-floor storage, family, family room portion of the building. The site is very large by Fairfax standards, it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and the house will not have a significant visual impact on any of the neighboring residences due to the large setbacks it will maintain from the property lines. You have a letter of support from the neighbor that is nearest to the property on Iron Springs in front of you, and they're in favor of the project, and they've found working with the applicants that they're cooperative, so. So when we gave you a table, we usually give you a table just using, using properties in the immediate neighborhood, but because none of the, none of the sites, none of the lots on Bay Road are anywhere close to being as large as this property, we had to go a little bit further afield onto Scenic Road, and you'll see that on similar-sized properties, the proposed square footage and FAR that they're proposing is really in keeping with other similar-sized parcels, and it's even in keeping with the FAR maintained by other homes on the smaller lots on Bay Road. So we believe that the, that the proposed house is in keeping with the scale of the site, and the, and the character of the neighborhood. The applicants actually worked with us. They originally were, there was a lot more off-haul proposed, and they have taken some of the off-haul, and they're using it to fill in under the proposed pathways around the house, and so they've actually decreased the amount of off-haul, and the town engineers are pleased with the amount of the decrease. New construction is never fun for neighbors to have to endure, but they have made an effort to try to minimize that. And we believe that the excavation proposed, to install the drainage improvements and supply lines for the residence, the parking, the driveway improvements are the minimum necessary to allow construction. Keep in mind that, you know, it was commented that perhaps there could be zero, off-haul, but this is already a site, the whole hillside beyond this parcel is unstable, and so you try to put more soil onto it, and you're creating a situation where you're either really having to do expensive improvements to try to recompact and backfill and, you know, key in the soil, or you have to take some of it off. And so they have made an effort to decrease the excavation, and town engineers are happy with the project, as long as the following conditions can be included in your resolution. And I think we might have left them out, but, but we've added them by, we handed out a revised resolution page in front of you with blue, blue writing. You see that one? Page, I don't have my glasses, page ten. They want the following conditions included: "The geotechnical report shall be updated with updated seismic and other design criteria and recommendations for construction of the residential structure. The building plans will incorporate the recommended debris catchment improvements near the ADU structure, as well as new foundation work for the ADU. The building permit submittal for the driveway improvements shall incorporate deep foundation support, adequate debris catchment, freeboard, and other elements as recommended in the recent geotechnical report dated April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, by Herzog Geotechnical Engineering." You have that as attachment C1 to your staff report. The building and public works departments were concerned because of the, the sharp nature of the turn from Scenic onto Bay Road, about how the, how the equipment and the concrete and everything, how the trucks were going to access the site. And so the applicants submitted a plan where all large trucks with more, more than two axles accessing the site, constructing, accessing the site, all large trucks with more than two axles accessing the site, will be limited to between the hours of nine AM and three PM, and to make the turn from Scenic onto Bay, the trucks will pull one truck length on Scenic Road beyond the turn to Bay, and then will reverse up Bay to seventy-eight Bay Road. When leaving the site, they will reverse down Bay Road, back one truck length onto Scenic, and head front-first down Scenic from that point. Trucks removing off-haul will be limited to ten-yard dump trucks. The building official has verified that when other construction projects have occurred on Bay Road, that is how the materials are delivered and items are removed. So staff has also added the following additional conditions to the resolution recommending approval of the project. One is that the driveway improvement shall be completed and signed off by the town engineer, the building official, and the Ross Valley Fire Department before construction on the house begins. Road closure shall be noticed in the field a minimum of five days prior to the event, and individual written notifications shall be delivered to each resident on Bay Road. Three, a flag person shall proceed any vehicle accessing or leaving the site in reverse-
Lynda, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, those are already in the reso, right?
Those are already in the reso, right? Those weren't added.
Well, you pointed out that there were some missing, and I think some of these, oh, these are, yes, these are, these are already in.
The ones you're mentioning now.
It's the geotechnical ones from the town engineer that were added, yeah. So, a flag person has to proceed the truck when it's backing either in or out, right? The applicant has, so, we also included a condition because Marin County Open Space has advised us via a map that this property is within a quarter mile of a known northern spotted owl nesting site, and so there's a condition that construction can't occur during the nesting season, and we verified that we do have the nesting season accurately indicated in the staff report. And I know there's some confusion because of the way we worded it, worded our conditions, but the condition should be worded the way it is worded in the resolution, which is that construction should not occur between February 1st and July 31st. That's the nesting season. That's the federal, the federal law and state law that you're not supposed to be building.
Okay, just for clarification, the reso says July 1st.
It should say July 31st, so that's a correction that needs to be made. So, we're recommending approval, you know, based on the conditions, based on the findings and the conditions contained in the resolution, including the added, the added conditions that we had, that were discussed in the staff report but just failed to make its way into the resolution on page 10. And that would conclude our report.
Do any commissioners have questions for staff? On my left? No, on my right? I don't have any questions. Oops, sorry.
Can you tell me, like, what's, like, the sequoia status of this project? Is it because it's technically considered the developed lot?
Yeah, and it's a single-family residence, and it's a developed area.
So, it's considered exempt?
Mm-hmm. That's what we're recommending. You know, we've had situations where the commission has not agreed. But I will reiterate that they're building the house in an area that's already disturbed, and it's been disturbed. This house was built, the cottage was built in 1916, so it's not like they just modified a section of the parcel. It's been modified for many, many, many years, right? And the northern spotted owl doesn't really stop construction as long as they adhere to that prohibition of construction period.
Is there a specific location for the spotted owl on the site plan somewhere?
There is not, and it will not be released because people go to try to take photographs. We don't even know the actual location of the nest.
How will they know? Well, they just can't do anything.
They can't do anything, right. They're within the quarter mile. We're given a map from Marin County Open Space. It has the quarter mile circles, right? So, I mean, I guess you could kind of try to figure out where the nest was and run around, right?
Questions on the right for staff?
I'm just wondering whether we sent a notification and public hearing to the Marin Bicycle Coalition, the Boy Scouts, and Open Space, and whether we got any feedback from them.
And why would we do that? They don't own property within 300 feet, and I don't believe that the fire road that goes up to the water tank connects with Tan Marancho.
Okay.
I mean, they, so the Boy Scouts access it on Iron Springs Road, and this development isn't going to make any changes to that access.
We'll come back around to that. Given the parcel size, is there a possibility for subdivision of the parcel?
A previous owner came through, oh, I don't even remember, was it like 1989, to try to subdivide, and at that point, it was determined that trying to subdivide and increase the development in there would result in them having to do improvements to that turn, and it was going to be very expensive.
And so, this application does not trigger that? Is that what you?
That's right. Yeah, we have a determination on it from our attorney in writing stating that it's a developed site, and it doesn't trigger those roadway improvements for a single, a single property owner to try to improve that road.
I'll hold on the last question.
The bike thing?
Yeah, thank you.
Mimi?
Yeah, thanks. So, on page two of the staff report, there's a reference to the 2954 square foot, and on the page with the table, there's a reference to the 3,089 square feet, and I was hoping you could explain that.
Where are you seeing the 3,000? Which page is the table showing the 3,000?
Okay, well, on the replacement page you put down here, and I think also on the original, yeah, on the page with the table, which is page seven?
Oh, so you're saying, that's just an error. 2,954 and says 2,975 in the table?
No, above the table, it says the house has a relatively small footprint, 3,089 square feet.
Does that include the ADU?
It would be more.
It includes, it includes the ADU, and it includes the storage shed, so I'd have to check my math.
But the shed was not included.
No, the sheds included in...
Well, this is just a footprint.
Sheds are included in floor area ratio.
So, a question then related to that with the 3,089...
So, if you're saying that my math might be incorrect, I can correct that. It's still, even if, even if my math is way off, they're well below the floor area ratio, and they're well below the lot coverage. They're not even close. They're at...
I understand.
Yeah, so I can...
But now, we've got three different numbers.
Yeah.
And if the 3,089 square feet, that shouldn't include the ADU, correct? Because it's not connected.
Yeah, but it's still living space on that site.
Okay.
Yeah, perhaps it should say more appropriately, additionally, develop, the development has a relatively small footprint, so inclusive...
Because it's speaking to, in that paragraph above, it's speaking to the house, so it's confusing. Speaking to the house, it should just be the house and not the ADU.
Right, and, yeah, what we're talking about is the footprint of the overall development
I will no longer use exact measurements. I will say approximately from now. When I added it, it came to, it came to 3,080, so. We will verify and correct our numbers, but you can rest assured that it's definitely well below anything that's permitted, and it's still in keeping with what you see throughout the neighborhood, and we'll correct those numbers. I will have the staff people that already reviewed this review again.
Okay, it's in the first whereas clause of the resolution, so we just need to make sure that, to the extent this is a...
I think you should just switch to...
A resolution that gets approved.
You should switch to approximately, which the planning director advised me I should always use, right? And then, I would go with the 3,000, I would go with the 3,000 that's in the table. That's what I would do.
Oh, okay, the 2975 that's in the table?
Yes, the 2975, but I would make sure you put approximately in front of it, yeah.
And then, let's see. Now, this is a downhill side of the street, sloping down from Bay to Iron Springs.
From the private driveway, that's, that is off of Bay, yes.
And there's a section of the town code that talks about the height restriction when you're on the downhill side of a parcel with more than 10% slope. And it says more than 10% slope.
Yeah, and the height limit on a downslope is 35 feet above grade or three stories.
So, you say 35 feet above grade or three stories, and I read it...
I should say...
Differently. So, and that's what I was going to ask you, if you could look at 1708060, which I think is where that town code provision is.
I think we got into this with the 80 Crest thing, because it's not...
With what?
With the 80 Crest project. It's not very well-written.
Well, to me, when I looked at it, I thought that the uphill side had a limit of 28 and a half and three stories.
Right.
And the downhill side had a limit of 35, period. And that otherwise, you've got these two-story restrictions. I mean, it doesn't make sense. So, you're saying it has to be 35 with three stories?
Well, that, so, that, we got into this with the 80 Crest project, where they're appealing the fact that they have four stories, and it is poorly written.
Not that we're discussing 80 Crest tonight.
Yeah, when you go back through the history of the height limits and how they've changed over time, it's never, it's always specified three stories, and for some reason, when they, when they try, it used, when I first got here, was 35 feet on both the upslope, the downslope, and flat lots, and three stories. It was everywhere you could do that, and they changed it because they got someone putting in a three-story on a flat lot, and it was just monstrous, right?
The good news is this complies.
Yeah, when they changed it, they changed the wording, and they didn't specify, they didn't write it very well.
Okay, so, it's, the three stories is for up or down slope?
That's what, that's what our...
When there's more than 10% slope?
That's what our attorney is supporting, and we do know that's a section we have to go back and clean up and make it clearer, yeah.
On the northern spotted owl, in the resolution, there's a paragraph 17 and a paragraph 57. My recommendation is we correct the July 1 date to July 31 in paragraph 57, and move it and replace paragraph 17 with it, because I think paragraph 57 has the correct language. But I'm also wondering if we can add a condition that would require a survey of any of the trees that have been approved for removal for nests, even if it's not the nesting season. I mean, it says construction can't occur during the nesting season, and I know we have one nest for a spotted owl located about a quarter mile away, but I'm wondering if we can have a nest survey prior to tree removal of the specific trees to be removed.
We could as a condition, just to conduct a spotted owl survey of the site prior to beginning construction, because that's really the key. Even though we do have the time period, you're thinking loss of a nesting site?
So, yeah, if the tree removal and construction aren't determined to be the same thing, and that's a question, you know, is there something to prohibit tree removal during the nesting season, number one? Is there something to prohibit tree removal without having a survey of the specific tree to be removed for a nest, and I would say a nest for any protected species?
My understanding, based on presentation by somebody who was a spotted owl expert, is that the owls actually move from tree to tree. They stay within a limited confine, but that after they've been in a nest for a certain period of years because of the mites and things like that, that they actually have to shift the nest location, which is a long-winded way of saying that removal of a nesting, a nest tree site per se isn't the problem. It's disruption of the owls, so that's addressed through the condition that says you can't have any disturbance during the nesting season.
So, let me speak to...
Well, we say we can't have construction, so I want to, you know, 17 and 57 are different, and 17 talks about limiting negative impacts. I think that we need to prohibit any disruption of the owls during the nesting season, but I'm also concerned if they come back to the same nest year after year, and within, after this approval but before the trees are removed, there's a nest that's created. I mean, the nests come and go, right? They move nests.
Let me, let me ask a question on this first. Hello? Let me...
No, no, but, but you don't want to remove, you don't want to remove a nest that's still there, that they might come back to.
Let me speak to that. I forgot where I was going to go with that. So, on the, I think, to Mimi's point about 17 and 50, whatever, 57, they're in conflict.
We just replaced 17 and 57.
So, we took care of that, so I agree with that, and we delete, right. So, as to the tree removal, I've asked questions about nesting habits of northern spotted owls, whether they go to, like, some birds go to the same nest all the time, and what I was told was that they don't, they try to, but sometimes there'll be something else in a nest, some other, some other animal or whatever, and they won't be aggressive to kick them out, so they'll look for somewhere else, so it's not like some birds that go exactly to the same nest, and you can't disturb that nest. But to Mimi's point with the tree cutting, if we know that, I guess my question would be, we know that there's, because they do go back to the same area every year. If they're, if we know that they're within, that nests have been found within a quarter of a mile, is there a way to determine or ask if somebody can specify where that those nesting sites have been found within the quarter mile, and is that in an area where those trees are scheduled for removal? Because I do share Mimi's concern that we'd be cutting down trees potentially that would be the nesting site, since the nesting site is within a quarter mile. So, if we have from Open Space or whomever some kind of mapping that shows where they've identified or where nests have been identified in that area, then we can look to whether that's, or ask if that's within that, that area of the tree removal is a question.
So, it's a two-part question. Number one is to, to do a survey and identify any nesting site. The second is, does that potentially raise the, does that raise the potential for a significant impact, i.e. a take of an endangered species? So, we could have the survey conducted, specify that it's conducted during the nesting season too, so that would let us know, hey, that's, you know, that's the tree. This isn't something that the applicants would necessarily be told. In fact, we wouldn't tell them, even though they probably already know, but, and then have that person also determine... But, and then have that person also determine whether it would be an impact, a potentially significant impact.
Well, I guess the question I have is if, if somebody knows that there's nesting within a quarter mile, right? And you got that information, correct? So if they've told you that, then they have some information as to where those nests were spotted. So could we not go back to them and ask if, if they can identify for you where within the, you know, within the trees and have, have, you know, have them understand what we're trying to accomplish? To identify to you that it may be within a quarter mile, but maybe it's not in those 15 trees that are going to come down? Just a question.
Well, yeah. And then the other question is, does that raise an impact? Because it's a two-part question, is even if it is those trees, is that going to cause a problem if it occurs outside the nesting season? And so that's, that's, there's, there's two questions. And you wouldn't necessarily ask the county, you would ask a biologist, because biologists have access to that information.
Okay, but can I say my concern? Because if someone gives us a report in writing, it becomes public record. And that's, the whole point is to not identify where, not to let the public
That's right.
Know, because then they go and they take pictures and they disturb the birds.
So the Point Reyes bird folks are the ones that work with the county folks and provide the county with the information that the county keeps very close to its chest. And however, there are experts in Marin County who one can hire to consult with and talk with the Point Reyes bird folks confidentially. And they share the information with fellow professionals about where birds are, if those professionals actually need the assistance. If they have access to the land and can walk around and look for them, they often can find them anyway. So I think it's really an expense on the part of the applicant to ensure that the proper surveys are undertaken and, you know, I mean, we aren't the experts in this field by any means. So, you know, what we want is some kind of assurances that the experts are, you know, checking whatever trees that are slated to be removed and the timing of their removal such that we aren't disrupting the habitat of, and I think we have to broaden it in some ways, the threatened or protected species that, you know.
Yes, this goes to Laura's question about the sequo exemption. And so when, when the owl person is doing that and they can maintain that confidential, that's part of what happens, is it's not subject to public disclosure because obviously you're protecting an endangered species. But if that person determines that the trees to be removed are the nest and it would be an impact, then we would have to come back to your commission and the applicant and say, hey, look, guess what? That cat X doesn't apply because there's a potential for a significant impact. I don't anticipate that. I've worked at the county for over 10 years and we did lots of projects that were within a quarter of a mile. And it pretty much is, don't do it during the nesting season and otherwise it's okay. But the good news is that we can apply that condition and we'll have the experts make that determination.
And then that would also apply to no tree cutting during nesting season.
And then another question I have is, in paragraph 16, there's a reference to, and this is a question just because I didn't understand it, it's not like I think there's a problem. This is paragraph 16 on page three of the resolution. And it says it prohibits grading of hillside properties from October 1
That's supposed
Through April 1?
That's correct.
Okay. So the code says initial grading of hillside properties. Is that, is there a difference?
So, so it's the major grading, like if someone, let's say you have to go in and you have to do a small retaining wall because there's a little sloughing. The town engineer has the authority to waive that, but it's the major grading of like the roadway and the foundation for the house, installation of the debris catchment wall that's going to require a lot of drilling for piers and the, probably the installation of the new utilities. That can't happen during that time.
Generally speaking, we rigorously control grading during the rainy season period, but there are instances where it can occur. For example, with Victory Village, they were doing that during the rainy season.
I'm sorry, paragraph, which one is this? 19, I, on page four of the resolution. There was a recommendation from the tree committee that the, the live oak be preserved if possible, and I see it, you know, being kind of marked as one for removal. And there's no reference of that recommendation from the tree committee?
Yeah, you should include that. And I, I wanted to point out, I forgot to point out something the planning director pointed out, which is that the numbering really needs to restart on the conditions with 1. Just goes on like the findings, so we're going to correct that too.
So basically, what you're reading is condition number 18 is condition number one.
And we'll, and we'll include the tree committee condition. I really thought that was in there, but I'm cracking it.
Those were my questions.
Regarding the height and how it's measured, can you just, when I measured height on page A21, I measured a different height than what was on page two of the staff report. How is height measured?
I usually, because these sites are not, you don't have like a uniform slope, right? The hillside can actually change slope under the house, so it's really hard to just go to an elevation and measure height. So I usually try to measure the highest point in the cross-section, right? And then I check the exterior of the house. But the height isn't going to be uniform because of the way hillsides aren't uniform. You know what I'm saying? So we want to look at the max, where it's the worst and make sure that at that point it's not over the height limit. Because anywhere within the footprint, if you go to measure the height from grade, you're going to get, you can get a different height. It's not like building on a flat lot where you measure and, you know.
So in that example, looking then at that same page and
You're on A21?
Right. And see how the peak of the roof is the one highlighted? And then they've got the callouts of, on the far left of the different heights. And so in the worst-case condition, then it would be the addition of those numbers down to, I guess you're saying, the center point of where that building is, which is higher than the number on the, we said 35 at that point.
I feel like you're looking at it wrong, though. Shouldn't you be looking at it from the highest grade point to the highest peak point?
It's, if you look at the definition of height, the vertical distance measured from a point on the natural grade, which is another tricky thing, to the highest point of the structure directly above. So the greatest distance from grade to wherever it is. So it's usually the ridge, but not always.
Wait, read that again? Could you read that again for me?
Height of a building, the vertical distance measured from a point on the natural grade to the highest point of the structure directly above, so a plumb line distance, whatever's the greatest plumb line distance from grade to the, to the roof, top of the roof. So as Linda points out, if there's irregular grade, it may be that something that, that the maximum height of that structure isn't expressed on the ridge because further down the roof slope, the grade drops away and that's your greatest distance. Height is pretty tricky.
Barry.
I know, but this, this steps in. So this is, this is like the roof, the living room.
You guys are having an off-mic conversation.
Well, I'm trying to teach. So it's, oh, this is a good way to look at it. See this elevation that they give?
Can you do it on the mic?
Yeah, so if you look at the elevation, the house like steps, and so you can't just take the flat elevation and add up the numbers to get the height. Because at any point, it's different. And that, that picture makes it really obvious that the, the family room and the storage room are actually pretty short.
Yeah, they're stepped down the hillside, so
Then it steps up the hillside, and so that next section, you know, you're not, it's
Thank you, Mimi, you're doing a great job.
Yes, you are. You could be Vanna White.
It's the plumb line distance, so if you were to suspend a plumb line, it's not going to reach from the highest point of the house to the lowest point of the house because there's a horizontal distance.
Which is why I always look at the cross-section. So if you go to page A3, right? It shows you, yeah, A3.0 shows you, it's a cross-section through the house, right? And it shows you how the, how the grade changes. So you can see that it's really not a very tall house. Is, is, is there, is the issue that, that you, that you're concerned that staff might have the height incorrect and it actually exceeds the 35-foot height limit? Because it's not even close.
Are you, you got that? Okay. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here? And would the applicant wish to make some comments? Thanks.
Hello, hi. My name's Leila Hillmy and I'm the project designer. And I've been working with Ann and Ted for over a year on basically the design and the layout of their new home. As Linda's pointed out, we've really tried to place it on the part of the site that's already disturbed. Most of the rest of the site is heavily wooded, and so to avoid taking out more trees than we have to, the house has been located in the area that really, we're barely taking out any trees for the house. The majority of the trees that are coming out are to do with the driveway improvements. The driveway improvements are required by the fire department and we've worked with them to reduce the width where we've been able to keep our grove of redwoods. We spent significant time, I mean, months, moving the house up and down and left and right and sideways and backwards to avoid, we had just so many criteria. We're trying to keep the trees, we were trying to step it down the hill so, for exactly the point you've just been discussing, to keep the height at any, any given point well below the maximum. And the idea is to reduce the impact. It's not a huge house, but it's not tiny, and we really wanted to avoid the, the kind of McMansion massive block that you often get on hillsides where if you stack all three stories in one go, then you look like you're looking at a wall. So we've stepped it down, and in fact, more than that, even, I'll just On the lowest story here, we've got a retaining wall. Sorry. So on the lowest story, we've got, there's a retaining wall below that, and that specifically there partly to allow access around the edge of the building. But the reason it's not at grade is to break up that, that what would be a tall wall, so that there shouldn't be any point that looks, that looks too tall. And the idea as you come down the driveway is that you see mainly, it should look close to being a single-story building as you come down, you can see. So you'd get the impression of a single-story building, and as you go around the site, you'll start to see more of it. So we spent a lot of time, a lot of care, and the owners know the site very well. They've owned it since 2007 and they spent a lot of time there. They're a family of four, so the cabin that's 374 square feet isn't adequate. But they love the site and spend a lot of time there. I'd quite like to hand over to Casey McDonald, who's the civil engineer, and she's going to give just a little description of the driveway, because that's been a, a big part of the project so far. Okay.
Hi, I'm Casey McDonald, the civil engineer. I think most of this has kind of already been covered, but I'll just reiterate it. The, you know, the reasoning for the improvements to the driveway is to meet fire safe standards. So the driveway already goes all the way down to the site and, and loops around, but we have to widen it to meet fire safe standards. And then currently, it's already susceptible to weak soils and, you know, slides and things like that. So we have to put retaining walls on either side of the driveway with piers into bedrock, which will actually stabilize this driveway. So it'll be much more stabilized than, than what's there now. Also, we're going to take all the drainage to downslope of the house, which, when working with the geotech, that's kind of the more stable area to send drainage. We'll regrade Iron Springs Road, the swale along there to make sure that there's no issues with drainage and it doesn't, you know, there's no water that runs onto Iron Springs Road. And then, as it's been mentioned, the debris wall to help protect the ADU. Oh, and then one thing I did want to mention was the, the off-haul that we have for the site, 70% of that comes from the driveway. So the house is really stepped with the site and with the topography. And so a lot of the off-haul really does come from the driveway and just the requirements we need for fire. I think that's it. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Hey, Shane Deal, 183 Frustock in Fairfax. Been a resident in town for 20 years. I'm a local builder in town. I specialize building in Fairfax. I'll be building this project for these guys. Few questions, really, I guess, with, you know, related to the driveway, some of the items that came up regarding the finishing of the driveway. I just have a few that we can discuss, maybe. We'd like to get started on the driveways, you know, that would be the first phase of the job, and try and start the construction phase of the house after the mandated spotted owl, you know, construction period. So what we're proposing would be to start the driveway first. Building the driveway is not necessarily, it's not a noisy part of the construction. The noisiest part of the construction is actually the physical building of the house. That's where nail guns are going off, that's when it's, there's a lot of banging and, you know, right? For doing the driveway, it's excavator, which is kind of like a backhoe, with a drillhead rig on it, it's drilling. They're not that much noisier than a car. It's a hydraulic motor run off a diesel motor off the excavator, which is muffled down. We feel if, if we're able to get started once the, the period with the city, I think it's in April, when you can start heavy excavation. If we could get started then, just doing the driveway portion of it, we'd like to build all the driveway bar sealing it with blacktop. It doesn't make sense to seal the driveway with blacktop and then build the house and run run concrete trucks over blacktop because what's going to end up happening is at the end of the job, which is going to take approximately a year, you know, we're going to end up blacktopping that and that's not what we want to do either. So I would like to have that in discussion. Hopefully, we can reach an agreement to get a solid road built in gravel that the fire marshal's happy with, the city's happy with. We can blacktop that later. A concern is with, hopefully, we can start that construction period, you know, after the spotted owl mating season's finished, but we have a very short building window. Okay? So what we're proposing is, is getting our head down, start it on the house July 31st and getting inside the house before, I believe it's February something and no more construction happens on the outside of the house. We can get inside the house, get all the interior stuff done. Otherwise, it will take, like the homeowner said, years and years to build this house and that's not great either for anyone, right? So it's not great for the neighbors, it's not great for the homeowners and spotted owls probably don't like that either. So we want to work with the whole system here and hopefully, we can meet everyone's requirements. So if any questions, I'm here. Give me a shout.
Does, I had a question, well, for the homeowner or anyone can answer this. There's a cottage on there now, so has that been lived in since, I mean, I understand that the property was bought 2007 and was there someone living in it at that point in time and has somebody been living in it full-time since you bought it?
Hi, my name is Ted Bender. I'm the owner with my wife, Ann. When we bought the house in 2007, the owners were not living in it there then. We have been residents there.
They rented. It was rented. It was fully occupied.
Oh, okay. So it was rented before 2007. Since we bought it in 2007, we've been there almost every day, but we can't, we have two kids, we don't sleep there. We rent a place.
I just want to add, we've had various family stay there for six months at a time. It's been occupied and we're there every day, so it's been occupied continuously.
Thank you. Does anyone on the commission have questions for the applicant?
I actually... Is this on? The contractor? And I'm not even sure that it really comes back to us in terms of what you just said, the intermittent road. That first road that you're talking about, that's for the fire department to access the site during construction, correct?
The road that we're talking about is the road that's actually there today. If you had driven down, look at the story poles.
Right.
So basically, that road stays basically as it is right now, but we're widening it and we're actually, the way we're widening it is we're actually digging into the hillside rather than shoring up and pouring retaining wall on the downslope. The engineers calculated it'd be better to go on the uphill side.
So, but is the road improvement to accommodate a fire truck, I guess?
Yes.
Or, because right now, it does not accommodate.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and that's the first thing that has to happen?
Yes.
As part of the permit order? Okay.
Yeah.
So, and I guess that's something that gets handled by the building department or fire in terms of, I guess, when that starts?
Yes.
And observance of the spotted owl nesting season, I guess? So that's something you would have to work out with?
Yeah, with...
With, I guess it would be with building? Because that's not something that we have discretion over, correct?
So, there's all kinds of things involved here. In order to do the road, you have to cut the trees down and that is one of, the noise of chainsaws and things is one of the most disruptive things to the birds, so the applicant around the corner that is building, he had to cut the trees one season and it's been sitting there and now they're having to, they're able to start again, right? When the excavation season is. So we don't have the authority to advise people that they can work during.
Can I add something to that? One second. With newer technology today, we don't even need, we don't need gas-powered chainsaws to cut down trees. We have electric chainsaws, they're quiet. I mean...
But, but the point I'm making is that it is not our discretion to make that call. In other words, it's not up, we're not the authority to appeal to because I think there are standards, rules and regulations that dictate what you can do and when.
Okay, so what you're saying is the actual timing of this is not to do with you guys, it'll be with the city. You guys are going to be doing the actual approval of the house.
Correct. Maybe Mimi can explain a little bit more about who is the authority for that, but I just want to clarify, we are not.
I think what I'm suggesting, and maybe we need to wait until staff are done conferring so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so we had another applicant that ran into the same situation and they worked with the state, the Fish and Wildlife biologist at Sacramento, to work out a schedule and the state approved it. So you might want to change that condition, that if they get approval from the state for their work schedule, the planning director will have the authority to modify that period of time that they can't work in?
From state Fish and Wildlife?
Yep. The Sacramento Fish and Wildlife Office, Fish and Wildlife biologist.
And it would probably start again with the report by the spotted owl specialist because that's, you know, they're the people that are going to identify the nesting site and determine, hey, if we cut down this tree, guess what? That's the spotted owl nest.
I have some questions for Casey, the engineer. So in the staff report, they talk about that the road is what's triggering the removal of a variety of trees, but then when I cross-reference to the tree report, I can't figure, and then cross-reference then to the plan, I can't figure out where two trees are that I'm interested in. One is coast live oak that has to be removed and one coast redwood. Where is that on like page C3?
Do you have a number on it? Because we have a list of the numbers.
I found the live oak right next to, it looked like the front door, basically.
That's not road, that's triggered by the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's right by the house. I don't know about the redwood, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it the, sorry, I'm looking at her.
Okay.
That coast live oak is the one that the tree committee recommended. See if you can keep it.
On the road.
No, the coast live oak is the one right by the house. I think it looks like it's right over here, actually.
Okay, then my second question for her is on that page C3, there's a dash, what appears to be a building in the middle of the lot. What is that?
Deck. That's a deck that's being removed.
Correct. Oh, it's a deck?
Yeah. That's being removed.
And then, because I'm not so familiar with access stuff, why didn't we come up from the shorter distance, which is Iron Springs Road, from the lowest portion of the lot up to the new building versus coming the whole way?
It's too steep to meet fire-safe standards. Your slope would, you'd have a very steep slope, so a fire truck couldn't get up there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
While you're up there.
Sure.
The MMWD Water Tank Access Road, is that something that is getting like public use as a sort of a hiking area too, or is it...
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe you guys do.
It's an easement on our property to the water tank. Where our property ends becomes private property to our neighbor, the one that wrote the letter, actually. So the tank is on his private property. There's no trails in that area and no public use.
And the water company had put a gate there and it's locked and they've told us we can't be giving out keys or letting people go up there, so it's not used.
Okay, thank you.
And so going back then to the question of the trees and the architect then, so I'm on page MEP 1.1, which is the site plan, and so...
So which sheet?
Or what plan can you walk me through, what you did to try to protect this tree that you're unable to protect this tree?
Okay, so we are, we're, what we were trying to do was not go further down the site because then there were more trees down there, more of them. And then we've worked actually to try and keep that tree. At the moment, it's a little close to call whether it would survive. The aim would be to try and save it, maybe have the engineer, the structural engineer, not Casey, design the foundation so that they can be hand-dug in that area. I mean, we could put tree protection measures, but there's a risk that it might not survive.
What I'm trying to ask you is on page MEP 1.1, it appears as if it's steps that are impacting it versus the physical structure, or I'm asking you, what plan page can you walk me through what's affecting the tree?
Yeah, okay. I think probably the site plan. If you look at 0.1.
A 0?
A 0.1. You can see that the tree to be removed is called out there and the footprint of the house is dotted.
But that's not in sufficient detail to show a blow-up of what's affecting the tree.
The dot that goes right through the middle of tree number 14?
We've shown the trees that are removed on the existing site plan and then on the proposed site plan, we don't show the trees and that's just a convention that we were required to follow. So it's hard to see the tree in position and the building in position at the same time because...
So is the thick black line on that A 0.1, the footprint of the house and the dotted line, the decking?
No, the dotted line on 0.1 is the footprint of the house.
So I'm sorry, can you tell me the difference between the dark long line, you know, not dotted, but the dark line and the dotted line?
Because on MEP 1.1, it appears to be steps.
Sorry, MEP, okay.
Oh, I wasn't on that one.
Yeah, the finished floor of the house is a little above grade, so we have steps up to the house at that point.
So is it steps or the foundation of the house that's affecting the tree?
It's... Well, the problem is on MEP 1.1, the tree is not shown, so we don't know exactly where it is because it's shown as removed on, and the trees that are being removed are shown on the existing site plan only, which is where we were required to show them as a convention by the planning department's list of requirements. So to show that tree, I would have to, I could do it, but I would have to show it, I'd have to do some drawing work to show where that tree exactly falls.
So let me ask a question on A's 0.1, because I went through there and I highlighted all the trees, so I matched them up.
It's tree number 14.
It's tree number 14 and on that plan, there's dots going to the left and then up by the house and around. What do those dots represent?
I think we're talking about the same thing, that it's the drip line of the tree.
No, no, the dots, if you looked at 14, you've got the drip line. Yes. And then if you look coming off of the plan, from 14, you see dots to the left, four, five dots, then go up to the house and around the house. And then are also on the right-hand side of the house.
We probably have a bigger copy than you.
This is so small.
So here.
I might need to come and look at yours.
Maybe Laura knows what the...
You can take this one back there and I'll look at Silly's. So go and take it back because you'll need the microphone.
So, can I, to help, hey, listen, I just want to make sure you guys understand that the arborist, Kent Julin, who we've worked with, he's identified that live oak as within, that it has to be removed because that's defensible space for the house.
But that was the one that the tree committee recommended.
They try and keep it.
Right, so that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I think the fire department's going to supersede.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, did the tree committee not have the fire department's recommendation at the time?
No, they had this report.
May I address that? I was at the tree committee hearing and they basically acknowledged that they had to accept the fire department's requirements, but they recommended that we attempt to keep it if possible and we're okay with trying to do that. So the tree committee wasn't saying, they talked about whether they could contradict the fire department and they agreed they could not contradict the fire department, but they asked us to try to keep it and so we will try to keep it, but the arborist has said that it probably won't survive the construction and so we should plan to not have it.
Thank you.
We could add a condition that says that the fire department will be consulted to verify that the tree needs to be removed for defensive, defensible space, you know...
But it seems like they've already done that when they did their, when they went through it on the report we have that was attached to the tree committee. It's listed as defensible space.
Correct, but that's the applicant's arborist. I mean, not that we discount that. I guess the question is, is rather than, you know, well, there's two questions. There's number one, are you suggesting that maybe you direct the applicant to redesign the project so that it's no longer within the defensible space of the house?
I want an answer to the question that we have been asking about what the dark lines versus the dotted lines are before I answer that question.
Okay. The answer to what are the dots are, I don't know. I can't see, they're not labeled, I'm really sorry, but I can't see what they might be. I'll have to, I'd have to respond to that later and see if I can see. The heavy dotted line is the footprint of the building. Then there's a dashed line also indicating tree canopy of tree number 14 that's going to be removed, but those dots I can see, I, yeah, I don't know what they are. I'm sorry.
Thanks. No, helpful to know that...
No, I know, they're not trees. They're not trees, I know that.
But the thick lines are the footprint. That is the important part to me and that tree 14 seemed to be outside the footprint. So what I was thinking when I came here today was that we would, I was going to ask the rest of the commission to consider including a requirement that spelled out what the tree committee's recommendation was with respect to the applicant making an attempt to preserve that tree. I think it would be to the benefit of the applicant if they had a beautiful tree as well as those of us who care about the trees, but I can also see that the fire department has concerns and if there are fire risks posed by a tree that is too close to the house, that's certainly something that, you know, the applicant is going to want to consider and take into account. I don't know.
Well, we could, as I said, we could add a condition that says, "Subject to the approval of the fire department, the applicant shall attempt to preserve tree number 14."
Just one final comment, the applicants are already motivated to try and keep it because it's a good tree, so it's not something we're trying to remove, something we're trying to keep but may not survive. Yeah.
It's part of your vegetation management plan, is it not, to remove it?
It is at the moment because we think it might not survive, but, and that's true. If it ends up, we're trying to keep it, we will have to review that with the fire department and see what they would require. They may need the canopy trimmed or they may not accept that it stays at all. We don't know that. We don't know that.
And the building is fire sprinkled, right?
It will be. And they've also required that not just the new building, but the existing little cottage that has to be sprinkled as well.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, which it's not at the moment.
Are you in the wooie?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have to do fire resistant?
Yeah, and it will be in the minimum, they'll probably, will probably, just as a voluntary measure, exceed the wooie requirements, just because everyone's so nervous now about fire, just peace of mind.
So, okay, so it sounds like it'll be at the fire department's discretion.
Right, absolutely.
So a question then, has the fire department, the fire department reviewed a vegetation management plan, correct?
They have, and they've approved it.
And what was submitted to them did not include number 14?
It's, what you have as a vegetation management plan is the one that was approved by them. So that tree was out in that drawing. If we try and keep it, we'll have to ask them to reassess it.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure the property owner had seen the revised conditions of approval from staff and finds it acceptable.
But once I can find it.
We may have additional ones on there, too, that we haven't discussed.
We have a question about one of the conditions as well to do with the driveway. When will we ask about that?
Okay. The conditions we've talked about in the staff reports, the town engineers' comments, and I just didn't get them into the resolution, right? And this one we talked about, really want to narrow it down from those ways.
Yeah, yes, we talked about that, yep.
And now would be a good time for you to ask any questions you have.
I think the main one, which we had already touched on, but it says that the driveway improvement shall be completed to be signed off by the town engineer, building official, and the fire department before construction of the house begins. For that to be completely constructed and final, typically you would put down the base rock, but you wouldn't overlay, you wouldn't put down the asphalt, you know, and do the AC. Is there a way, you know, the reason why we do have that paved and not gravel is not because it doesn't meet fire safe standards, but it's because of stability and just the longevity of the driveway and the geotext recommendations. So we're wondering if we can have that revised, that the driveway be rocked, you know, or something along those lines. Sorry.
That's typically a fire department requirement, so my recommendation is that we don't override it if they can convince the fire department that the base rock is adequate for fire egress, for fighting a fire, because, you know, as soon as you start building the house, you've got wood, you have flammable materials. If they're satisfied with that, fine. If they're not, no.
But I thought the question was, the contractor had talked about paving it, but maybe, and maybe I misunderstood it, initially having it just rock to be able to work on the house, and then, once the house was done, to go back and put, and pave it so that all those trucks and everything, you don't have the final road done, and then all those trucks go down and have to repave it. So I think that was the question, not whether it would stay a rock or gravel road.
I understand that. But what we're saying is the decision on whether or not the base rock level, that lift, is adequate for the fire department to get egress, to fight a fire at this newly constructed house, needs to be made by the fire department. So my recommendation would be that condition remains. If the fire department writes us a letter and says, "Fine, we're good with base rock, or we've inspected it, it's good," then they could do it. If not, they have to finish the road.
It's similar to this, like when people want to build new parking structures, the fire department says, "We don't want any material stored for the site, for the construction of the house until the parking is finished." So if they won't, you know, if they'll approve it as base rock and they can get in and out and the, that's not, then it's okay.
My understanding is that they will approve it if it can support the truck load. So you might have to compact the soil and then put the base rock as long as the truck is stable. I think the question is, do you have to cut trees in the process of that compaction and clearing? So I think it still goes back to the state because, so this, you know, it's the state first and then whatever you can do.
Well, I think it's two different questions, because they still want to do initially the rock and then finish it after the house is done. So that's one question. That doesn't relate to the owls and the cutting of the trees, really. So it's the two, both of those need to be addressed.
Yes, but I think your question is, can you lay the gravel, the rock base, and compact the road without distur... So can you accelerate the schedule? Do you need to cut trees and compact? That's the question.
I believe that we have our tree permit, correct? So if we have tree committee approval of...
Dealing with a federally endangered species, and so having a tree permit doesn't eliminate the prohibition by state and government law that you can't disturb the owls?
No, no, I know. And here's what I was going to get at, is that if we have our tree permit to remove the trees, and like we all talked about, we would deal with the wildlife, the correct wildlife bureau with the spotted owls. If we could get rid of the, get the trees done before the spotted owl breeding season, which is, I believe, is February, whatever, if we could get that done sooner than later, that portion of it, then that noisy part of it would be done so that we could, further down the road, start the road at appropriate time, so.
There's no prohibition on what time of year you can cut trees, so they could do that. They could get their building permit, right? The tree committee doesn't, typically doesn't want the trees to come out until the building permit is issued, but they could get the building permit, take the trees out before the nesting season.
So on the staff report, on page 10, it says that staff has added the following additional conditions to the resolution. And it says, "The driveway improvement shall be completed and signed off by the town engineer, the building official, and the Ross Valley Fire Department before construction on the house begins." Where is that in the resolution? I'm just having problems finding it.
That's the blue stuff.
Well, I looked at it, and maybe I'm just missing something.
We're looking for, the driveway improvement shall be completed before the...
Well, and now, I mean...
It's on page nine. It's on page 10. Well, I'm seeing it on page nine. It was a, it was a public works and Fairfax building condition, right? 53. The fire department also agrees. You know, they don't even want, they don't even want materials brought into the site until they can access the site.
And so, Ben, how would you have recommended we tweak that to allow for, I mean, I think we already usually do have provisions that say if the fire department waives its requirements, you know?
Yeah, but I might have left it at this time.
Yeah, given that, that's where the, that condition originated. If the applicant wants to go to fire and get something in writing that says, "We're comfortable with just completing the driveway to the base rock, to the level of the base rock," if they give that to us in writing, then we're fine with making an interpretation that they can do the final lift to pour the AC after they, you know, finish trashing the road.
And the condition that allows agencies to waive stuff is 28. Conditions placed upon the project by outside agencies, by the town, so I think you can just add to that one, by the town engineer, the Ross Valley Fire Department, MMWD, the sanitary district, right, can be amended with that agency or the town engineer's written notification to the planning department prior to issuance of the building permit. Conditions...
Well, I think outside agencies includes all those ones.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. I read it wrong because I'm...
So are we done with questions for the applicant? Yes, so, does, well, yeah. Does anyone have comment, public comments on this project? Seeing none, I'm bringing it back and closing public comment for planning commission discussion.
Looking at me, okay. So I think this is a great project. I think you've done a great job addressing the natural topography and trying to break this up to reduce the massing. So I really commend you for working on that because I think you are successful. I think there are a lot of maybe questions you have to ask about timing for your schedule, you know, but in general, I, you know, it's a very thorough submittal package at this level, because you still have to go through the permits for the building. But it sounds like you've done all your earthwork, all your homework for the earthwork. So I support this project as it is presented.
Yeah, I echo Esther's comments. My concern really is maybe some of the building color. I'm not sure. I know that in the staff report, it said that the site was somewhat secluded, but I mean, there is exposure, I think, from below on Iron Springs. I didn't go, and I did see there was some, there was a house directly across that was visible. So I'm just thinking, maybe the white might be a little too visible. And I mean, I think all the other colors, maybe, maybe there's an alternate choice for that, but that's my only comment.
I think it's a very attractive design. You did a very nice job scaling it, and your plans are very well done.
Am I right?
Yeah, I echo Commissioner Caroline's concerns about the white, but otherwise, with the kind of changes that we've discussed, I'm comfortable with this project.
I agree with Mimi.
So depending on if the commission wants to do that, would you suggest replacing that with an earth tone color, replacing the white with an earth tone, subject to staff's approval?
Maybe they can clarify where, I mean, I see that there's other gray siding colors, but all I see is white on the rendering, so maybe they can clarify where the other color, the proposed colors are.
So the idea was that the main level is the lighter color, and then as we've gone down the site, it's part of the stepping down. We've been trying to use the color to do the same principle that we've done with the volumes of the building. So the single level, the main level, is the white, and then as you go down, the colors get darker to, again, to reduce the impact of them on the site. And it's kind of a visual trick, almost, to emphasize the main level and to reduce the impact of the lower levels. So we do want some contrast. We're not trying to make it all blend in, we're trying to blend in the back so that the foreground looks like a small house. So there's a kind of a, there was some thought behind it. It's not bright white. Our rent, that's one thing about the reproduction, it's a slightly off-white, more of a creamy white. We wouldn't want bright white. And that sounds obvious, but it's, yeah, more like a slightly cream version of white. I don't know, do you have the color, actual color chip on that board? I know I handed some in. Or is it just a photocopy?
That's the color board.
That's the color board, okay. It is supposed to be cream, not white, so. I think the manufacturer's name is Arctic White.
It's Arctic White.
Arctic, yeah, and that makes it sound whiter than it is.
Is there, is there like a gray that's between the pearl gray or the Arctic White?
There's definitely options. I mean, we just would like to keep some contrast between the lower levels and that main level.
I think if we, if we leave it up to staff, maybe bringing it one shade down for overall.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-21 with the following changes under the first whereas, replacing 2954 square feet with approximately 2975. Anything more on this page? I see none. No change on page two, going to page three. A deletion of condition 17.
Or replacement with the language from 57.
We're deleting.
Were you replacing it?
We don't have to renumber everything, we just take the 57.
Oh, I see. I see, I see. So we will be replacing condition number 17 with condition number 57 with the following A certified biologist study shall be performed. I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I would just change the date on that one to July 31st.
Yes.
And then, when we get to, all right, and then add a sentence that would require the applicant to obtain approval from the California Department of, I don't know if it's Fish and Game?
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife, of a work schedule for...
Construction.
Well, it's not just construction, it's the construction and the tree removal and the grading and all that prior, you know, and that the planning director would then have the authority with that approved schedule from the appropriate California Department to sign off on this, the work schedule.
Right, and I would say the applicant's spotted owl biologist can work, or may work with the state, Fish, Wildlife, and Parks.
Okay, that's an acceptable modification. And then going down to condition 18, we're going to be renumbering these, starting with one. And I'm modifying condition 18 to say that the color board, Arctic White, shall be replaced with an earth tone color to be approved by the planning director. No other change on that page. No change on page four. God, I thought we had something about, I thought it was pa, item J. We were going to try to maintain and preserve number 14. Wasn't really convinced of that change, though. Let me just go ahead and keep going, and then no other change. Next change will be on Condition 30, approved by outside agencies. That's where I heard that going. And then that's all the changes that I had. Does anybody want to amend my motion?
I have a question about your change to paragraph 30.
Paragraph 30.
I think we were looking at paragraph 28 that already has the outside agencies language. I don't think we were talking about adding that to 30.
Conditions placed upon the project by outside agency. Was that an acceptable wording as it was? Okay, then I'll remove my outside agency on 30.
And there was also a condition, maybe I missed it, but subject to approval by the fire department, the applicant shall attempt to preserve tree number 14.
That was on Condition 4, item J. I said maintain and preserve tree number 14, subject to fire department approval.
Great. And then, did you get the additional paragraphs that staff gave us, which will have to be renumbered since 57 will go away, right?
No.
And so 58, 59, 60 and 61 will have to be 57 through 60.
Yes.
Actually, we have to clarify this. The, what we think is Condition 17 is actually a finding. So 57 remains. We'll modify 17 to match 57, but 57 is the actual condition.
Okay.
Can I ask about that condition?
No, not right now.
Michelle, can I, I guess, amend
Yes.
Your modification to the color. I think you said earth tone.
I did.
And I think we said a shade darker than what was presented.
I said what I wanted to say, earth tone, and I don't accept your amendment.
Okay, so what happens if we?
Well, then we, you'll have to make another motion and vote against me.
Or you have a discussion.
Well, I just said I didn't accept it. I'm not gonna accept it, and I made the motion.
We're not done. First, we're not done with
The motion.
The motion for the resolution because there may, you had asked for other changes we may have missed.
Well, actually, I was hearing the planning director with some revision to, oh, that he was helping me walk through the staff changes to the conditions of the 58 through 61, which are now going to pop in as 57. No, I'm sorry.
He's not going to delete 57 because it's, it's a condition, not a finding.
That was the one that we, right. So we're adding the staff changes as written. And now, does anybody have any other amendments to my?
I do. I want the dark sky lighting in there.
Do you have a condition that you want to add that to?
We can add it, we can add it as the last.
Is there already a lighting condition, though?
No.
Oh, there's not.
That's what I'm trying, I'm trying, not that I found, so I want to add that, unless I missed it, I want to add it as the last condition to make it easy.
Did anybody else see a lighting one? I didn't either, and so can you please provide me the language for that?
All exterior lighting shall be night sky compliant.
Shielded from offsite view, fully, like, you know, minimum necessary for
The standard staff paragraph on
No, I need to read it, or, can you say it again, please? I liked what you said.
Well, it's, the gist of it is that
All exterior lighting shall be night sky compliant.
Lighting shall be the minimum necessary for adequate safety, invisibility, shall be dark sky compliant and shielded from offsite, direct offsite illumination.
Downward.
If it's dark sky compliant and shielded from offsite view, that it's going to be fully shielded, downwardly direct.
Okay, so I heard all existing lighting shall be dark sky compliant and and, oh, all exterior lighting shall be night sky compliant. And shielded from offsite illumination and downward facing.
And the minimum necessary for, for safety.
And a minimum necessary for safety. Are you happy with those changes? Okay, I'm happy with that amendment. Any other amendment?
So can you read your, your condition for the colors again?
The color Arctic White on the material board shall be replaced with an earth tone color as determined by the planning director.
So I would just change, my amendment would be to change it from earth tone to a neutral color or neutral tone?
I heard you.
Yeah.
And I don't accept that amendment.
Okay, so what do we do?
Do we have a second? Are you done, are you done with your resol?
I am, thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
I think the neutral is a more appropriate word, and it was more in keeping with the other, the other colors that are on the palette.
So do we have a second on Michelle's motion?
With With the modification? No, because I do not accept it.
She's not agreeing to your amendment, so she's asking for a second.
So there's no second?
Well, hold on. Can you hold on just a second? Thank you. I would like to understand the difference between earth tone and neutral, and why neither of them sound like they include purple.
I can't answer because I don't know what a neutral is, but I know what an earth tone is. It's, it's more in keeping with the soil and the green and what is earth-based.
Or it could be a green. It's sort of a terroir color palette.
Well, yeah.
And, and your, your thought as to neutral is to get it sort of the, the paler white color that the applicant is recommending?
A neutral color is more without, I want to say without pigment of, like brown. I mean, if you want to get into colors, yeah, because I don't, I think brown is too specific to say earth tones would be, you know, anything like the desert or the ground and moss, things like that. Neutral is just lack, it's almost lack of color, you know, red, blue, you know, purple, sorry.
All right, so then I'll second the motion that's on the table.
Which is, so is that the earth tones that's on the table?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm in favor.
I, I, I'm not going to hang it, hang it up on the color. I think that we already specified that it would be, the planning director would have discretion in proving the appropriate color, so I will vote aye.
Yeah, I'm not going to hang it up, but I think we're not color specialists here. We should not pretend to be experts in colors. I just know that neutral is more general. Earth tones is very specific. And so I think, I don't think, without looking at alternatives, we can dictate that, but I will approve, so that this is not hung up, and leave it up to staff to select the color.
Let me ask a question on that motion. Did the motion state that staff had approval authority on the color?
Within the earth tone range. Because she's saying neutral includes purple, I don't know, she was saying purple and blue.
No, it does not. It does not. It's the opposite. Neutral is, you know, we're talking about gray, light gray, white, lack of pigment, so it's more general.
The applicant will give us some options, and we'll just pick one.
You could look at some options.
Oh, we'd like to see color samples.
That's quite dark. It's, it's like your, your vest. It's that kind of color, which seems very specific to me.
Well, I think we can work out the color.
It can also include like a moss-colored green. I mean, earth tones are, so I don't think
It's a broad range, yeah. For example,
The Arctic is part of the earth.
I believe that the planning director will be able to choose an appropriate color. Out of your, we want three alternatives and, okay.
Okay, if it's subject to planning director's approval, I'm good with that.
Well, that's good.
So I didn't vote. I didn't vote. I didn't abstain. I disagree with the resolution as to the earth tones. I think Laura's approach was fine as far as how it works into the building, knowing that they're changing the other two levels, but I'm not going to not vote to, I'm not going to vote to disapprove this based on that. I think it should have been left as it was with the discretion of the Planning Commission, so I vote yes.
The motion passes forward to you.
I think it was unanimous.
So there's, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I didn't know when it was appropriate for me to ask a question, and so I feel like I missed my opportunity, but can, can I ask it now? It's about the spotted owl items, number 17 and 57. And after we got your report, we started to talk to our neighbors, the Warners that are dealing with the spotted owls on their, on their property, and we came to understand that there are guidelines that the spotted owl experts used to determine what noise levels are acceptable during the mating season, during the nesting season, and what construction equipment are allowed, given a certain distance. And so I'm wondering, I just, I don't know what the final language was that we decided on, and I just wonder if we could leave it open to the experts to decide on that, that working schedule and not prohibit a certain period.
That's what they did. They, your expert can present a timeline to the State of California Fish and Wildlife Biologists, and if they will accept it, right, then you're, then you're, you can do your work schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And you would bring that state Fish and Wildlife acceptance, you know, their information in writing to, to staff.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a 10-day appeal process, and you can check with the Planning Commission on the specifics on that. Thank you. Can we take a quick break? All right, so discussion items. There are no discussion items, so we're going to go on to the minutes. Minutes from November 21st, 2019, Commission meeting. Does anybody have any changes or corrections?
I have an amendment on page six. The second, Commissioner Rodriguez. It's actually one sentence, not two bullets. She was not sure they had required this on other applications that had been submitted, therefore she did not support this wording. That's it.
I, I have a change on page two. The second-to-last paragraph at the end, the last sentence says, Commissioner Newton asked if it's staff could identify, so just take the "it" out.
Said second-to-last paragraph, so Commissioner?
I'm sorry, it's page three, bottom of page three, second-to-last paragraph, last sentence.
Remove the "it."
Any other changes or corrections? Laura?
I have one on page five. My comments about the, the height limit. Okay, so the second sentence, I think what I was trying to say was a flat roof or mansard would probably be needed to meet the requirement. I think it was what I was trying to say, instead of, instead of saying would be used.
Any other changes or corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the November 21st meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No. Okay. Now we're going to go on to the election of the new Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations? I would like to nominate Phil as Chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Congratulations, Phil.
Thank you. I'm honored, flattered and amazed to be Chair again, and I'm looking forward to it. Next year's going to be rough. Maybe we'll do three meetings a month. Never a dull moment. That's the motto for this year.
So do we have nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rodriguez for Vice Chair.
Second?
I second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, I think. Now we're going to go on to the plant
No neutral palette.
I would just like to thank Commissioner Swift for her chair, chairing during the last year. It was brand new for you, and I could see you really stepped up to it and did a lot of homework, Cindy. I appreciate that.
I, I can comment because I sit next to you and I see your copious notes. You almost have more notes than staff report pages, and I think that's fantastic, and you would make a great Town Council.
Thank you. Now we're going to go on to Planning Director's report.
Okay, I'm not going to go into any detail mainly because it's not really, I mean, the report is the report, but ADU, I can report that the Town Council did adopt both the urgency ordinance and the first reading of the regular ordinance, but they pretty much shared your commission's concerns about the potential fire safety impacts and were very detailed in their direction to staff to work with your commission on what we're calling the third ordinance, which is basically a revised regular ordinance. So everybody recognizes that we're doing the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance just to get a complying ADU ordinance on the books and have the legal backup vis a vis the second ordinance, but everything that your commission mentioned, the council echoed and supported. The one thing they did say was they wanted this to get back to them quickly, and they were pressing staff for a schedule. So I probably way overpromised saying, you know, we're going to be looking at January, February, because, yeah, but
You did.
But the, well, the other aspect is this has to get vetted by HCD, so it's not going to be going up to the council quickly because HCD is going to get swamped with these ordinances. Well, it's Well, it's, the urgency ordinance takes effect now, so, but, yeah, everybody recognizes that taking the one-size-fits-all and applying it to higher critical fire hazard areas with narrow roads and access problems that don't quit and parking problems that don't quit, it just doesn't make sense. Now, whether or not, so we'll be coming back with options and we'll see what your commission's recommendations are. Cannabis businesses, the application period ends on January 6th, so that'll be right after we get back. There'll be this little blitz of applications we anticipate, or maybe not, because there are darn few sites that are available, so, but that, once, assuming we get at least one application, that will be first and foremost on your commission's scheduling also, or very far up it. And then other items will be starting to ramp up on the housing element. That'll probably start with conversations with the housing committee, affordable housing committee among others, but that'll be starting to have that conversation about the housing element, likely working with the county because they have the dedicated staff to do that, and they've been of assistance in prior housing element cycles. We don't know what our RENA numbers will be for the next housing element cycle that's due to come in later on this year, I believe, which is kind of a tight timeframe to, you know, hang a housing element around when you don't know what your numbers are, but in any event, we'll work on that. And then other aspects, the county's objective development and design standards group will be probably making a presentation here in Fairfax in the early part of the year and working with staff. This is the collaborative effort that I think nine Marin County jurisdictions are working on. With grant funding from the state, we submitted a grant application to the state to help underwrite the cost of this and other work. And then finally, an inclusionary housing ordinance. This is one of the problems is Fairfax doesn't have one, otherwise this whole conversation with Mr. Azazi wouldn't have taken place. It'd just be like, whatever it is, 20% or whatever, you have to do this, and everybody'd know that instead of, so that will be also taking place, and this is an item that's also of concern relating to the ADU ordinance because, you know, in theory, these small units are supposed to also be affordable, although they often aren't. So, a full agenda, and I haven't even mentioned Miranda Heights, which I do not intend to tonight.
So, a question, a couple questions for you. I noticed and that I took a quick look at the ADU ordinances that you had sent up to the council, and I had some other questions, but since it's going to come back, I'm not going to ask my other questions other than I did notice that you did have a stream buffer in there, and that was one of the things that we had talked about, so, and I haven't watched my tape, but I'll do that at some point. The cannabis, we don't have any applications in as of now, correct?
Correct.
And the housing element, when does our, I didn't think our housing element expired soon.
2022 is when the next-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I was right.
And we have to do sequel on that, so that's why you really have to get started.
And then my last item isn't a question, but just a statement related to, you know, as we, and I'm kind of jumping in here, but as we talked about historical resources and all, I did find out that we do have in town a California State Historical Landmark, number 679, which is the home of Lord Snowden, Fairfax.
It's the site, I believe. I'm not sure if it's-
It's the town and country was the bird nest, Glen, and so I asked the state to send me the application, so I've got a copy of the application. I think it was submitted in like 1959 to the, to the state by the prior owner, so, just thought I'd mention that. Yeah, all right. Any questions or comments?
I do have one, one thing that, so the parcade was redone, but there was, there was an existing problem with it that's still there, and it probably won't cost much to fix, but, and it's hard to describe, too, but you know where the, the walkway is, about halfway down, the flashing light walkway where the, where you get to, you know, the Barefoot Cafe. So on the, what side is that? I think it's the south side, not the side of the cafe, but the other side. There's a, there's a piece of sidewalk that invites you to be able to walk on it, and then it just kind of ends, and it used to end, and it's hazardous, in my opinion. Just, it's like three more feet of concrete would do it. It's not even a whole sidewalk.
Are you saying it's on, it's on the side where the used clothing store is?
Yeah, it's kind of, right, exactly where the people wait for the bus. It's on the outside. I could walk someone over there very easy. You could see it.
Yeah, you should talk to Public Works.
But I've, I've-
But it's in, across the street, on the parcade side, right?
Right. It's the parcade side.
Yeah, I know what he's talking about.
So when I'm standing at the bus stop in the morning and the bus is heading into the city, there, where the bus stop is, the sidewalk is too narrow between where the bus stop is and where the crosswalk is that goes over, not at Barefoot, but the-
The used clothing store.
The used clothing store.
And it sort of ends.
It's narrow and then it disappears.
And then it just goes, drop off, you know, so it-
Just before the disabled access.
Exactly. You could become disabled walking on it. So that's, that's something I maybe recommend to Garrett Toy to look at, or some, you know.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if anyone's familiar with, you can go on the website, and for things like this, you actually file, there's a, there's a place to put in work orders and complaints to, you know, Public Works, and they, they then, the building official, the Public Works manager looks at them and, you know, schedules them based on the hierarchy of urgency, right? But they get, you gave, you get a number, and then you can call up and you can say, where is my, where is this number, and when it's, when is it going to be addressed, right?
So, I'm addressing it here and now. I guess I could do that also and submit a photo or something, because, you know, it's-
That would probably be helpful for them, but if you don't have time, I mean, we'll relay it to them, but I'm just letting you know for the future.
Right.
It's a good way to memorialize.
That is good of us to have that, too.
I also am a little hesitant because I'm always asked to act as the go-between, between the person, you know, that has the issue, and then they always come back at me with questions that I cannot answer, and so it's almost better-
I won't.
You know what I mean? No, I mean, building and Public Works will be asking me questions.
Really? You wouldn't know. Okay, I'll submit it with a photo and everything.
Yeah, and then they'll call you if they don't understand or if they, yeah.
Any other commissioner comments or questions?
I have a question. I believe there was a meeting last night to address the striping project. I didn't listen to that or attend the meeting. Is there any update or anything important that came out of that?
Yes, they're going to be having a community meeting this Saturday at 10:30 at the Women's Club, so there was discussion. They didn't take any action last night. It continues to be controversial, but I think a lot more information will be provided on Saturday, so if you can attend it, that'd probably be your best bet.
And there's signage at, at the entrance, like at Doc Egger, there's a sign there talking about, that they put up today or yesterday about Saturday's meeting. Anything else? Mimi?
Yeah, so, one of the things I took away from last night's town council meeting was, yeah, they want us to move quickly on this third ADU, JDU ordinance, this, you know, the first being the emergency, the second being the one that mimics the emergency but is a regular one, and the third one being the improved one that hopefully we'll have some back and forth with the powers that be about whether or not it's going to, you know, upset the apple cart to throw hopefully some, some language in there that's going to protect us in fire situations and address the fact that we've got such narrow streets and, and one way in and one way out. And I am hoping that, so one of the things I heard was, well, the planning commission's going to have a lot of work coming in the spring, so let them get this done sooner rather than later, but you're also telling me that we might get the cannabis application sooner rather than later, and I gather that Miranda, Miranda Heights is later rather than sooner. We don't know. So I just, I'm trying to figure out what you think, you know, not, not having the council put you on the spot, but maybe just the planning commission putting you on the spot, what the, what the real timing of us really getting into the weeds in this ordinance number three on the ADU, JDU, because that's what I'm really focused on. Like, is it doable to think about us getting something that we can talk to the powers that be in March or April?
The powers that be will not be looking at it in March because, as I said, even were your commission to conclude its review at the February meeting, we're going to need to take that to HCD.
HCD is the powers that be.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yes. We would be sending it to them or having that discussion with them, but we don't know how long, their feedback will take so that we could take something back to the council.
Okay. The other thing is, I received some information from Frank Egger, and I believe he submitted something to the town council last night. Could you make sure that that's in the planning commission's packet for when we address this, because I think there were a lot of points in there that we're going to want to consider. You talked about the housing element being revised, and, you know, actually, we can revise the general plan up to four times a year, so asking whether or not the housing element expires to me is not the point. The point to me is, why aren't we amending the general plan multiple times to address its deficiencies, one of them being the maps that we need to address, and that I also sent you guys, I didn't send the rest of you, but I sent staff some information about a lot of these housing laws that came up, and some of them are requiring that we amend the general plan, not by 2022, but by the end of 2020. And so I want to know what we've got planned in terms of a town to put together a team to work on amending the general plan and not just focusing on 2022, but focusing on the end of 2020, which is right around the corner.
Yes.
All right, so seriously, I will volunteer to be on that team because I take this seriously, and I think there's more than just the housing element. We got to do the surplus lands inventory. We've got to do all this kind of stuff.
Right, but, okay, and I did get, I did get your email and I read it, just very briefly, surplus lands, the town doesn't have any. Surplus lands are basically lands that the town intends to dispose of, so those requirements to go through the whole offering it to affordable housing groups, et cetera, et cetera. It's only applicable if we had lands that we wish to dispose of. We don't at this time, so things like that, but in terms of the conversation of how those feed in to what we're doing, yeah.
Okay, point taken. We also have been talking about zoning to protect town-owned open space, and, and so obviously, these things are all part of, you know, the many things that Phil's going to have to figure out how we're going to accomplish in 2020. So, all right, that's it.
And my, my thought on, and I was going to mention this when you said that the council wanted to see us return a ADU and, you know, a new regulation soon. I recall when council thought that reducing house size would be a five-minute effort. I'm not concerned about, from my perspective, what the council thinks is going to take a short period of time. Revising the ADU, JADU is not going to take a short period of time, especially when they want us to address many of the issues that we wanted to address, such as health and safety. So I just, putting that out there, it's going to take what it's going to take for us to do a good job on it.
And I actually think the inclusionary ordinance is more important.
Yes, and I echo what Chair Swift is saying. We will make our best efforts, but we're not necessarily going to get the timing of the town council based on, you know, meeting time, but, you know, we'll, we'll move things along. I like to move things along, so we'll see what happens.
So any other commissioner comments or issues, then?
I just want to say, staff reports were excellent tonight, and thank you very much for all you guys do, and happy holidays.
You too, as well.
Yeah, thank you always. I mean, yeah, it's always been really good, and we know, we know it's tough.
So with that, I request, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're out of here.
Happy holidays, everybody.